...meeting of the City of Zonin.
Sorry.
I saw enough of that in the room, too. Absolutely. Of the City of Zonin Board of Appeals to order. This being a special meeting outside of our typical third Thursday meetings to address the proposed 40B project building for property at 279 through 281 Old Oak and Bucket Road in City of. Before we get started, the City of Zonin Board of Appeals is committed. Janine, does the select board read this every year? They do. The City of Zonin Board of Appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is a disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We asked our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. We are obviously here in person in the Select Board's hearing room tonight. We are also available on Zoom, which I see we have 28 different entrance to. And there is a dial-in by phone, all of that information being available on the ZBA's website. Before we get into the thick of it tonight, I wanted to make some introductions. I wanted to speak a little bit more specifically about that statement that the town has us read before we get started. And I also wanted to mention, which I guess I'll start with, we're going to adjourn this hearing at 10:00 PM this evening. If we haven't covered it by 10:00 PM, starting at 7:00, it's probably better be served at 7:00 PM at a successive hearing. I don't anticipate I'll get any objection from that, especially at this hearing from the applicant. If we start to get close to a decision and we want to go to 10:45 so we don't have to come back, that might be a different story, but I don't anticipate that happening tonight. My name is Anthony Buchanan. I am the Chair of the ZBA. I also, I think it bears mentioning, because I'm certainly going to mention it later on. I currently, obviously, live in town. I used to live at 297 Old Oak and Bucket Road. It's been about six years. If I still lived there, I would not be sitting here and I would most certainly be sitting over there. We could just introduce ourselves quickly. You know, we're doing things a little differently than we can do on our typical Thursday nights.
Hi, Chris Karsho.
Hi, I'm George Sixes.
Susan Harrison.
Justin Marks.
Fantastic. City of Zonin is a three-member board. The three voting members of our board are to my left and right, and then we have two alternates, and so we maintain as a five-member board, all five members being full participants in our hearings. I'd also like to introduce Cindy Amara, who is acting as special counsel to the board and by greater extent, the town on this matter. Cindy is attending by Zoom. I've already apologized to Cindy personally. We hired Cindy to act as our special counsel as recently as yesterday evening, and she wasn't officially notified until late this morning. Cindy and I have discussed, and she is adamant about her and other members of her firm attending future hearings in person, but she is attending by Zoom this evening and will likely need to jump off for a stretch due to another commitment. But Cindy, we're happy to have you. As I said today when we discussed, please don't be shy about interjecting whenever you feel necessary. And likewise, if the board has a question for you or would like to hear your thoughts on something, we'll certainly call out as well.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here and I will be there in person next time.
Wonderful. The other thing I wanted to get to quickly, which we touched upon in the town's general statement. As many of you probably know, and if you don't, you'll probably find out quickly, 40Bs are complicated. Obviously, this isn't your average raisin reconstruct or home addition. I am sure some of you have some very strong feelings about what will and won't happen with this piece of property. We are going to express those feelings and opinions in a polite and productive manner. We are going to pay attention to this board's direction about who's going to speak when. We're going to avoid back and forth between members of the development team and members of the public. We're going to avoid back and forths between members of the public and this board. We are going to hear every concern that you all collectively as a group have, and we're going to do our best to address those or try to explain why maybe we can't address those. We may not let each of you express exactly the same concern. We do not have an unlimited amount of time. A 180-day clock started about nine minutes ago. I don't intend to use that entire clock for this application. I think it would be a mistake, and I don't think the town would be well-suited. Maybe could things come out in this hearing process that makes me change my opinion about that? Yes, but I'd be surprised if they do. In terms of an agenda and sequence for tonight, we've covered what I wanted to cover initially. We're going to hear from the developer and their team. What I would hope for is a topical explanation of what you are doing here, what you hope to achieve through this hearing. We don't necessarily need to get into the specifics of every aspect. Even if you do, people are going to ask me to repeat it, and we are all rather familiar with your rather thorough submission thus far. Once we do that, we're going to have questions from the members of this board. We're going to have questions potentially from council and from the building department. My hope is that we're going to have some questions from some other town boards and officials. We're going to try to address those. We're going to give you an opportunity to address those. And then we are going to hear from the public tonight. My hope is, is that over the course of those, we're going to discuss peer review, and we're going to discuss a to-do list both for your side and for the town for our next hearing so that hopefully by our next hearing, we can start to get into some real specifics. Any questions on that from any of you? Or generally from you, but that doesn't mean you can't ask questions later?
No, no.
Comment at all.
Yes. Yes.
People should know because of the location of this property.
Yes. That's right, and we would certainly, if there are members of the town officials from Norwell, I think we'll want to hear from them at the same time and give an opportunity to City of Zonin boards and officials and then residents of Norwell or our partners. I'd like to put them in the same group as the public. That, quite a bit said, Attorney Delisi, if you'd like to start your presentation, that would be fantastic.
Sure. Anthony, I'm not sure if you guys read, I don't think I heard you guys read the opening of the public hearing, the actual notice, and usually read that in the record. I don't know if you want to do that.
You're right. This is the notice. This is the notice. Wow. What, I think I did read this.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah, and it really just says a proposed 40B project building hearing at the address, yeah. The notice did not get into any of the particulars.
There is a second page.
There's a second page. Okay, not in the copy I was holding. I would love to see it. Thank you. Thank you.
No, my, 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 my zoning application.
I like it. This is good. I'd rather get this out of the way as far. Regarding the application to be heard, it is being brought by Salt Meadow Development at City of Zonin LLC, seeking a comprehensive permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40B, Sections 22 through 23, 760 CMR 56, and the Town of City of Zonin Bylaw and Comprehensive Permit Rules and Regulations, and/or any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant to allow for the construction and use of at least 32 dwelling units, at least eight of which would be restricted for low and moderate income for the development of affordable housing at the property known and numbered as 279 through 281 Old Oak and Bucket Road in City of. No problem.
Attorney Jeff Delisi, I'm with the law firm, Richard Delisi and Harris, here in City of. I'm with my client this evening. To my right, Mr. Dan Lovendale of the applicant, which is Salt Meadow Development at City of Zonin LLC. Also here behind me is our engineer, Mark Casey of South Shore Survey Consultants. Mark, just want to do that. And then our architect, Jeremy Lake of Union Studio Architecture, right next to Mr. Casey. Thank you. Our development team also consists of a couple of folks who are not present here in this room tonight. One is Patricia Van Bersker, and she's with, she's our landscape architect, as well as Jeffrey Dirk from Van Ass and Associates, who is our traffic consultant. I know, Anthony, you've kind of gone over the ground rules. Busy night tonight. The way I was approaching this evening was to give a brief overview from me personally and then have Jeremy Lake, our architect, speak as to the architectural aspect of the project. Have our engineer, Mark Casey, go over generally our engineering on the project. And then kind of turn it over to the board to figure out how to move it from there. I have been involved in similar projects where, excuse me, we have, the board has had decided, or has decided, it's other circumstances to, you know, designate certain evenings for certain topics such as drainage and architecture and recreation and so forth, and then to elicit opinions from the public as to those topics as they're discussed versus the way I view this hearing, which is kind of generally an overview of the project. I know that you guys are going to get into some more comprehensive detail for sure. So we have spent a great deal of time conceiving the project, which we believe to be a reasonable size and scale for the neighborhood. We've spent some time ensuring that the architecture of the buildings are consistent with the typical New England type of architectural style. This is not, as you're going to find out, the type of project that jams many units into a single building or two buildings that are multiple stories high, such as other projects in the South Shore. And Jeremy's going to go over, you know, his design. As far as the property is concerned, it consists of three assessors parcels, which have an aggregate of about 11.22 acres of land. The address, as you indicated, 279 and 281 Old Oak and Bucket Road. Salt Meadow Development LLC is the sole owner of the property and therefore has full control over the site. The property is located in the resident Marituri zoning district as well as the overlay zoning district, which is the water resources overlay zoning district. The property presently contains a two-family dwelling that has a total of five bedrooms. The plan, and I'm not sure, and I just want to kind of start with my cover letter to the board. I indicated that this was a 32-unit project, at least a 32-unit project. The project proposes to construct 32 dwelling units in the various mix of buildings, either single dwelling buildings or duplex buildings. In addition to the 32 units, there is a, as I indicated, a single-family dwelling on the property that is a two-family dwelling. And so this is a proposal to construct 32 units and also the existing dwelling will be two additional units above that. The total bedroom count that we have in our application is 89. So currently, we're proposing that eight of the dwelling units will be de-restricted, and that is eight of 32 units. But if it ends up being 34 units, that would be a number which would be nine, okay? Low and moderate income family housing is defined as having a family income of no more than 80% of the median family income in the area. There are wetlands on the site, which were recently delineated and approved by the Conservation Commission. We will be required in connection with this application to apply to the City of Zonin Conservation Commission, which will have a hearing for approval under state regulations of the Wetland Protection Act for any work within its jurisdiction, which is 100 feet from any delineated resource area on the planet. With respect to wildlife, the site is not located in a mapped priority habitat area. Project was preliminarily reviewed by Board of Selectmen in connection with the site eligibility process, which last year the state issued a site eligibility approval letter for the site, approving a total of a maximum of 34 units and 90 bedrooms. A copy of that letter was provided to the board with our application package. While the site eligibility, like I indicated, the site eligibility letter permitted the maximum 34 units, 90 bedrooms, we also have the existing single, two-family dwelling on the property. And the way we're approaching that is we think that the board might be interested in a discussion concerning that existing dwelling with respect to this project. And we're willing to engage that discussion concerning however that dwelling might fit or that existing structure might fit into the project. Along with our application, we did provide drainage calculations. We provided a stormwater management plan. We provided a preliminary traffic impact assessment. We understand that those aspects of this project will be discussed in detail on other evenings, not this evening, after the board has had an opportunity to review the specifics. Before returning the discussion to our development team, I wanted to briefly address the regulations and standards, which Mr. Chair alluded to. This is a comprehensive permit application, meaning that as far as local regulations go, the ZBA is the sole permit granting authority. In lieu of other applications before town boards, because it's quote a comprehensive application, other boards have been provided with these plans in this application, and they have an opportunity to comment to the ZBA, and their comments would be considered in the ultimate determination of the application. But there will be no other hearings in the town of City of other than the Conservation Commission, which has its jurisdiction under state law. The stated purpose for Chapter 40B procedure is quote "to provide a streamlined permitting process that overcomes regulatory barriers to the development of low or moderate income housing," close quote. There is a tremendous need for low and moderate income housing in every municipality in the Commonwealth, and the Massachusetts Legislature has recently required towns to consider adopting additional regulations that facilitate and encourage that objective, especially since the pandemic, and especially in towns that contain commuter rails like City of. So there is a presumption as we begin this process of the need for low and moderate income housing, and that that need is consistent with the needs of the town of City of. And by law, we're required to start with that premise. So, excuse me, with that, I will turn to our architect, Jeremy, to show some of his plans and begin our presentation.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Should I sit here? I'm going to shift the mic. Works this close. Janine, do you mind calling up the? Can you call up the first set?
Yeah.
Please.
Is that the full plan preliminary site?
Oh, the preliminary site. Just go back to the beginning. While she's doing that, I'll introduce myself again. I'm Jeremy Lake with Union Studio Architecture and Community Design. We're based in Providence, Rhode Island. We are a full-service architecture and neighborhood design practice. We've been in business for 20 years. I've been there 10 of those years. We do work all around New England. Actually, I have a growing portfolio across the country as well. Our real focus, our real specialty are these sort of residential communities, single-family.
Just, I know that we have folks here that might not be able to see the screen. If you're, okay, because if, feel free to stand up and stand in front of the screen so you can see it.
Yeah, I will say, I know you guys are totally familiar with the package, but we also thought it was useful to the public to see the projects. They understand what we're discussing tonight. So again, I'm Jeremy. Happy to be here. Thanks for having us, if you don't mind going forward. So this is the package we did submit. The front end to this, we can kind of get through relatively quickly. We always include a few images just to help ground people in where the site is. I'm sure most people here are very familiar with where the site is, just off of Old Oak and Bucket Road. It's the sort of red dot there to the left. We always find it interesting to see how close it is to other things in the community, like the town hall. We're a mile away from that. The commuter rail, we're only a mile and a half from that. You know, we're only three miles from the shore. So again, sometimes you get too focused right on the site, right off the bat. You kind of lose a sense of where you are in the greater community, so if you don't mind going to the next. Again, this is just the existing condition of the site as it is today. The red line shows the boundaries of our parcel. There is the existing duplex at the front of the site that we've been discussing. There is or was an additional structure further back into the site. And ultimately, as you get out to the right, which is south in this view, that is the Salt Meadow. So it goes all the way from Old Oak and Bucket, all the way through back to the Salt Meadow. Next one, if you would. And so this is our proposed design. One of the things I do want to highlight right off the bat is towards the bottom, there's a bunch of black squiggly lines that sort of cut through, and we've labeled that as wetland area. So that is the demarked wetland area that we wanted and needed to stay out of. That drove a lot of how the shape of the project ended up being. So we had a limited amount of frontage on Old Oak and Bucket Road, including the existing house, which is the gray house with a star on it, sort of right in the middle of the frontage there. We did include a small, what we're calling an entry green. We're thinking of that as more of a visible, a visual amenity. That's not really an active space that the residents would necessarily use. Although we thought it might be nice to have a little kiosk as a bus stop for school kids, et cetera. That's a good place for that. Our entry drive turns in off of there and extends back all the way through the site. We have a large central green space. You can see there in the back middle. That serves as our primary septic area. I will have a perspective view that shows a little more detail there. At the time, we hadn't yet gotten the input from the landscape architect, but we actually had trees and play spaces and a few other things in there. So it looks kind of blank and bald here, but that's because it was just before her efforts. And then if you go all the way out to the end of that road, we actually included a little overlook area for the residents here to be able to walk out and actually sit and look out over the Salt Meadow. So really, it was conceived of as being a series of sort of connected amenities as you make your way through. As Jeff mentioned, we have 32 new units proposed. Those are the various shades of yellow. With the additional two units in the existing house, if we were to include them, it would be up to 34 total units. The units themselves are a mix of single-family detached, which is to say standalone homes, and single-family semi-detached, which is to say duplex homes. And we have a couple of different models, if you will, that are variations on whether it's a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom, whether it's a duplex or whether it's a standalone. So that's sort of the site layout, if you will. Next image. And then we did, this was one of the early studies we also did, not knowing what we were going to do with the existing home. We just looked at how we might utilize that same plot for another two units, you know, more or less in the same configuration, still the entry green, et cetera. So that was just a study we did, again, depending on how our conversation goes with you all about the existing house. We didn't want to at least look at that and understand that. So here's a perspective view of the community. So Old Oak and Bucket is there to the left. You can see the existing house is the one that's a little sort of cockeyed from the rest of the units. You can see the little entry green with the pavilion, the entry road making its way back in, back to that green space. Here, you can see how that green will in fact include a few trees, a few little play spaces for whatever children end up here, and ultimately making its way all the way out to the Salt Meadow there in the back. You can also begin to see with the duplexes, our strategy was to sort of never attach them where the primary mass of the house was, so that really even when they're attached, they do read like a series of single individual units that just happened to be attached really primarily by the garage between the two units. Next image, please. And then I won't go into great depth in the unit plans. Most people are really curious about laundry rooms and bathrooms, but we just wanted to show that we have a two-bedroom version, which is roughly 2,200 square feet. You can go on to the next one. We have a three-bedroom version, which is again the same ground floor layout of a living, dining, kitchen, and a primary bedroom down with two additional bedrooms upstairs. This one, if there is, we have a little optional bonus room on this one that may or may not be finished base. That would take you up to about 2,350 if we have that. And this just gives you a general idea of what that could look like as a duplex. So again, one unit there to the left with his front porch, entering, living, dining, kitchen, additional bedrooms upstairs, their two-car garage, the primary bed would be behind that. And then you get the adjacent unit attached there on that garage wall. So again, when you see it flat like this, it looks like it's all very sort of one big continuous wall. But in the perspective, hopefully, you can see the garages are actually stepped back a little bit so the two-story mass of the house is what projects and what you actually read as you move your way down the road. And then lastly, we have the Lily Cottage, which is the single-family detached unit. Again, a very similar program, living, dining, kitchen on the ground floor, primary beds, suite, two-car garage with a couple of bedrooms upstairs. This one also has the option of a bonus room, but again, similar range, you know, up 2,000, 2,100 square feet, depending whether they finish out that space or not. And then this is what it looks like, this is the single-family detached. Again, front porches on every one of these units. They actually have little back porches and patios on each of these units as well. They're very much most to be meant to be in keeping with the sort of traditional residential scale and character of City of. We wanted to make sure it fit right in. We have a list of materials included here, which I don't think is worth going through, but it's just meant to illustrate that we're using high-quality durable materials. We're not using vinyl siding. We're using composite or cementitious siding. So again, the hope is that the scale and the character of the architecture fits right in, sort of doesn't jump out, so. So, and that was that list of materials. Again, we're happy to go through that in more detail if you want, but just for an overview, we thought that was useful, so.
Thank you.
So thank you, Janine.
So that would conclude our overview of the architectural plan initially. And Mark Casey, our engineer, is going to walk you through our site plan, unless you have questions that you'd like to ask, Jeremy. And you're going to have plenty of opportunities to ask him questions.
Yeah.
Let's do the opening. That way everybody gets.
Good evening. My name is Mark Casey. I founded South Shore Survey and Consulting in 1987. I was here in this very room in 2006. We did a 40B project happening in City of, happening in Norwell. And through the years, we've also done work directly for the town of City of. Janine, if you could go to that full plan set, and we can go through the the plan sheets. The sheet number one is just a cover sheet. It gives you a pretty black and white depiction of the layout. If we go to sheet two, it shows the existing conditions. It shows where the perk tests have been done. It shows where the wetlands are. And again, we've been in front of the Conservation Commission. All the wetlands have been accepted either by way of AMRAD or Noticement 10. Sheet three would be the utilities layout. This is actually pretty straightforward. This is going to be each unit will have its own septic tank. We will have a common septic system. We'll be using a Presby septic system. And could we switch to that Presby 99% wastewater contaminant removal? And the, the only reason I included this is Presby is an incredible system for treating wastewater. The requirement for separation of groundwater with a typical septic system, depending on the perk rate. If it's a perk rate of less than two minutes, you have to have five feet of separation of groundwater. If it's two minutes or greater, you need four feet of separation of groundwater. Presby is so thorough in what they treat. Up to 99% of wastewater contaminants are removed. You can go within, and this is approved by DEP for general use, you can go within three feet of groundwater. It's so efficient. Then, now could we go to sheet four? Sheet four is grading drainage. What we're going to be doing is collecting all the roof runoff. We're gonna be recharging roof runoff through chambers. Stormwater will be collected and go through subsurface infiltration, where it'll be treated, it'll be treated actually by storm septic units before it gets into the subsurface chambers and eventually will return to the aquifer. Sheet five is erosion control. You can see on the westerly or bottom portion of the, the plan, you'll see a squiggly line that runs all the way through behind the units that's basically limited work, silt sock. So the, the wetlands are protected. If you go to sheet six, that would be road profile A. And sheet seven would be road profile B. Sheet eight. I think it's vehicle movements. We, you know, taken pains to make sure that the biggest of the Situate fire apparatus will be able to negotiate these roads. Sheet nine is the septic in more detail. Sheet 10 is all construction details as sheet 11, 12, and 13. And as we go through this, who you decide your peer review engineer to be may or may not have any questions on the details we showed for construction. And that's pretty much it. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. All right. Remove some questions from the board. And I'll start with, just to go back to the, the units. It's, I did notice in obviously the beginning of the, the application, is at least 32 units. I want to clarify, this looks to me like an application for 34 units. Is that right?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sure folks in the audience are like, that's the application. No more at least, no more gray area.
Yeah, so the application is the construction of buildings containing 32 units plus the existing two-family dwelling per total, grand total of 34. In which case, if it's 34, it's not a formal.
Right. The existing two-family dwelling.
Yeah.
I didn't see, and certainly maybe because I missed it, a layout or square footage or bedroom count for that. And I'm assuming it may be somewhat renovated over the course of this as part of the application materials.
Yeah, so there's, there was not a floor plan for that building. It was just the building on the site plan.
Mm-hmm.
And then in addition, with the application materials is a, a subser card for that particular property, which indicates the total number of bedrooms to be six.
So those are two, currently, those are two three-bedroom units.
Sorry.
Five, I think.
Sorry.
One's two and one's, one, two and one, three.
Yeah.
The next thing that jumped out at me is where your plans indicated the affordable units be. 25% affordable. To me, in all fairness, that means if you have 100 three-bedroom units in a project, you should have 25 three-bedroom affordable units. I use a big round number. Your math's smaller, but it was a lot more decimal points. You didn't maintain that 25% of your larger bedroom units. And, and you weren't off by one. I, I think, unless my math was wrong, but. 25% of your bedroom counts means that for affordable units, you would have two two-bedroom affordable units, six three-bedroom affordable units. And then if we get into further, you have two different types of three bedrooms. You have three-bedroom attached, three-bedroom detached. 25% of your three-bedroom detached, essentially single-family homes, one of those would be affordable. I saw, I think, a plan that had seven two-bedroom affordable units and one three-bedroom attached affordable unit. Right? And then that was a little more confusing, because I think I saw, or no, I must have missed one, maybe it was two three-bedroom attached affordable units. What I'm getting it at is, I think I'd like to see 25% of each of the respective types of units be affordable. Right now, the, the less valuable units in terms of market value have a higher percentage of affordable units. Now, I think there's going to be a lot thrown around that, oh, these guys are just trying to make money. You absolutely are, and you'd be silly if you weren't. I, and I, I'll say that to the auditor. That's why these gentlemen are here. And if they won't say it out loud, it's I will. And thank God, because if we had developers in town that weren't trying to make money, a lot of the stuff in this town that looks nice wouldn't look as nice as it does. And there'd be a lot more boards over windows. So I'm not gonna fault you for that. But I do want to have more of a discussion about where those affordable units are and how they're made up. The other question that I will, now I'll let you maybe respond on that.
The only response I'm gonna have at the, the moment is I, I'd need to go back to look at the statutory language to see what the statute says, excuse me, on that issue.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know as I sit here.
Right.
What it says, so we'll, we'll look into that, Corey.
And the follow-up question I have to ask to that, does that response mean that it's your intention to have some of the more desirable units become affordable units in transition from your current application only if the statute requires you to do so?
Um, and the answer to that is I'd have to confer with my client.
Okay, definitely, perfectly fair. That's why we had more than one meeting.
That's right, and that's, that's the answer we have to top.
The other question I had was, we're, we're gonna get into a lot of setbacks. Peer reviewers are going to review these plans. And I don't necessarily want to spend a ton of time on every measurement of these plans tonight before peer reviewers have looked at them. I would love a little bit more specificity on setbacks from Old Oak and Bucket Road for the existing structure and the proposed structures. If, if you, if you were able to speak on that now, I think that would be helpful to me.
Do you know the numbers?
Because we are in the digital age and, and I didn't prepare myself old-school wise with paper copies.
Yeah.
And it scaled, which I have to have a scale with me. I can't give you the exact distance off of Old Oak and Bucket Road from either the edge of the road layout line or the, oh, you got paper now?
Sure, I, I do. Paper copies. Only because we require the application. Yeah, but you know what, I like them, I, yeah. I, uh, have to put on glasses after a long day. And, uh, so I'll, I'll give the, I'll loan this to you. We have actual copies, you want to grab that?
Thank you.
I would specifically, I'd like to know, folks, ma'am? And I'd, I'd like to know the, uh, two units for this to the, that's gonna be the. Yeah, that's to the west. I'd like to know how close to Old Oak and Bucket Road those are.
Number one and two.
Number one and two, that's right. In comparison to the existing 281.
Okay. To the road layout, closest portion of unit one is about 22 and a half feet. That's to the edge of the road layout, to the.
And that, and that's not to the property line.
That, that's the property line.
To the property.
And that's the property.
The road layout line. To the actual pavement, which is the traveled way, is going to be more, is going to be about 33 and a half feet.
He's measuring to the first step. That's in front of the porch, that's in front of the house. So he's giving the absolute closest.
And the porch is covered?
Porch is covered.
Yeah. Fantastic.
Okay, that's, that's, that's like two more feet.
But just under 30 to the property line and just over 30 to the pavement.
Yep, and on unit number two, to the closest corner of the porch, not the steps, is about 22 and a half feet. And to the closest corner of the porch, unit two, to the actual edge of the traveled way is about 33 feet.
Okay, that's very helpful.
So approximately 22 to the property line and 33 approximately to the road.
Edge of the pavement. For the next hearing, if we could get a plan that essentially, Jeff, you're very familiar with plans that we typically see for a more typical zoning application. Mainly setbacks, all of them. I'd love to see all of the exterior setbacks from these buildings to the, to the nearest property line. I don't even know how far this building is from that property line. You know what I mean? It'll be helpful when we go through the needed waivers. I, I think that would be, uh.
Right, I agree, I think.
Yeah.
I think that's in order, I'm gonna give that, Corey.
I'd love, if you could put the building envelope on that plan, I think that would be great. Obviously, now we're getting into a little hybrid area with all the buildings that we have here. But with the setbacks, the dotted building envelope line would be helpful as well. And that makes it a lot easier to highlight, oh, we need a waiver, oh, we need a waiver.
Yep.
It's good for me to get started. I have a very general question that we will go down on this later. But generally speaking, the traffic impact, right? Because we have one, one way in, one way out, so to speak. We have some number over 30 units, 32 or 34. There, there are, right, twice as many garages, so there will probably be twice as many or more cars. I'm familiar with Old Oak and Bucket as many people are. It's gonna have a significant impact, right? Because the, probably, the, and again, I, I felt, hold me on this, but from the normal line to the rotary, that is probably the number of units total, right? Except for just the development, approximately, right? So you're gonna double the amount of cars potentially in that section.
Again, you, when. It's going to have a significant impact, I agree with you. I think some folks underestimate how many homes are in some of the subdivisions. They are not, they're, that are very well set back.
That's right.
But still.
That's, that's right, it's gonna be significant damage. It will be, it will be significant. Um, so how do you guys, you know, we see, I see the plan. How do you guys propose to deal with that impact?
Specifically getting in and out of that development, as well as the general traffic. And then it's just, as part of your answer, we're adding more than one curb cut here. Majority of the units are off of a new curb cut.
Right.
And then it, it looks like we have two other new curb cuts, right? In your plan, sure.
Technically, there are two currently, because there's two homes, right? So you could almost think of, I know it's a more substantial.
Yeah.
But the road is kind of the driveway of the other existing home that we're not returning. The existing home has its existing curb cut.
Yeah.
So it's really just that one duplex that has its two driveways. That makes the other, the new.
Yeah.
Curb cuts. But didn't stop.
Okay, what I was gonna suggest, Jeff York is a traffic engineer. And I, I think at a, a future hearing, Jeff will go through everything, the traffic study, the vehicle count, you know, everything. Although we know a lot about it, I'm not a traffic engineer. You know, we, I'd like to, uh, have Jeff here to go ahead and completely go through the traffic study portion.
Jeff, reputation precedes him, he's very well regarded. Our peer reviewer, I anticipate, we're gonna discuss that in a little bit, will be, checking his work is the wrong term, but reviewing his report and coming to some of their own conclusions. So I, I think that makes for a sense.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I'd say obviously, traffic is an issue for quite a discussion on this property, so. Yeah, I just wasn't, it, it, to me, it would have been inefficient to do a presentation on a traffic study on this opening evening. And you haven't even had the benefit of a traffic engineer who would want to be here to listen to it.
Uh, sure.
100. Yeah.
That, that's fine.
Yep.
But I, for me, that's maybe one of the, in addition to the setup issues, I want the new questions that need to be answered. Other questions?
I don't have that written right now.
Okay.
I was just more curious about, I think, the details of your question being the 25%, but also the placement within the development, how you guys sort of ended up with each unit being specified for, for, do you have a better understanding of that?
Yeah. I spent quite a bit of time on that. They're relatively spread out, it's not an affordable section, and that's great. It's not what you'd like to see. But I did start to notice that in terms of the, the bedroom counts, which aren't just bedroom counts, those, I mean, I, I don't need to be an expert appraiser to know, you're gonna sell the three-bedroom, single-family homes. Those are gonna be the most valuable, the most desirable. If we're not committing 25% of those units to affordable, I'd like to understand why. And obviously, I'm looking for more than just the stuff. Because there are more. So that's something that we'll discuss about in the future. Susan?
I have a lot of questions. It sounds like we're gonna dig into the traffic. I have questions on the existing dwelling, too. I got some questions.
Please.
I, I just wanted to understand what specifically we're doing with the existing dwelling.
If, if I can, I think our approach was that this is by its age, gonna be subject to demolition delay. And I'm sure there's people in Situate that might consider it, may or may not consider it of historic value. So our idea and the, and the reason we are in this almost dilemma where, to we have 32 or 34 units is we wanted to work with you and wanted your input on what direction we're gonna go. Are, are we gonna save it, right? Are, are we gonna save it and improve it? So we're looking, we're looking for you folks to weigh in and tell us what direction you would like us to go with this.
It's one of the areas of flexibility in their plan.
No, I, I see that, but I don't, I mean, I imagine historic is the way.
We'll certainly ping historic again for their thoughts on this. My, most likely, we hear the napkins, but most of our historic structures, I'm not familiar with the specific history of this one. It's gonna fall into one of two categories. It's historic because it's old, or it's historic because it has some. Or it's historic because it has some special significance within its history. If it's the latter, I would hope that we get some information on why it might be a good idea to save it. If it's the former, I'd be more interested in hearing from abutters. There's, I could see reasonable minds could say, oh, I wanna keep it because that's what was always there. Reasonable minds could say, look, I don't want that to be the only building in now a bunch of buildings that doesn't look brand new and professionally done. So I think we'll hear from some abutters on that, and I think you probably anticipate that those conversations made you ready to be adaptable in your plan on what you're gonna do with that building. And we're probably gonna have some conversations about number of units and locations of units, and so there's some more flexibility there. I think we're gonna flesh that out, but I think that's why we don't have specifics on that now, which is understandable. We'll need to get specifics eventually, without a doubt.
And and just to address it before we get to it, because we will get to it. We're a maximum of ninety bedrooms here.
Yep.
So depending on what we do there, if you start doing the math, we have eighty nine of those in the new units as proposed. So if we kept that house and that was, say, five bedrooms as it is now.
Right.
That's too many.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're at eighty nine with the thirty two new buildings, correct?
It's the thirty two units.
So, because we didn't know which way the existing was gonna go, so all I wanted to say is depending which way the existing goes, we can modify some of the three bedrooms to two bedrooms in the bulk, in the rest of the community. So we will, we will balance that out, that we don't go over the ninety, but I just wanna make, there's numbers all involved here, so just wanna make sure that was on the table.
Just to clarify that again, though. The ninety maximum is for the construction of the new structures, right?
That's the limitation on the site in general.
That's the site in total, okay.
Yes.
So with the eighty nine bedrooms that are there now, there there has to be some modification.
There's some, there's We need to pay for the
I apologize.
Just, I don't wanna overwhelm you of this useless information.
We got, we got fancy papers, don't worry about it.
The the way it works is, uh, DDE says, when you have, uh, you you're allowed to go up to ten thousand gallons per day at that farm, okay? Black water, gray water, right? And you have to figure every bedroom, the design flow is a hundred and ten gallons per day. So you divide a hundred and ten into ten thousand, you come up with, I think it's ninety point nine. So ninety bedrooms is the max, okay, for any site that you have. Now, if this was a subdivision and these were all separate lots, it would be a different story. But this is what, this is what DEP calls a facility, one facility.
If you go over a design flow of ten thousand gallons per day, you have to build a wastewater treatment facility on the site.
Groundwater dish.
Which is not in the car.
Right. For about eleven increases, obviously.
And it, right.
Well, and and maybe, we'll talk about it, whether it's a shifting your your theoretical proposal, make it to to better, or whether it's removing a unit.
I understand.
Right?
Yep.
Which might have some other benefits.
Yeah, that's why, again, the the, there's a little latitude on that, uh.
Just to get it out there.
Yep. So usually, usually the historical commission wants to do a site visit to the existing dwelling to ascertain uh, whether it's significant in its architecture and also whether, uh, you know, what the condition of it is, you know, oftentimes you have buckling floors and things of that nature, so, uh. Uh, and like you said, Mr. Chair, is, they they typically look at either architecture, people who live there, or events that it might be associated with.
Correct.
And and just, but there is no federal jurisdiction over this house, there is no state street, it's not in the state, uh, historical district. So, you know, there is, that means that there's latitude for the board to decide.
And Bob, our historical building by law, am I right that it doesn't prevent the modification or demolition? There's a waiting period, you say?
That's all.
Right, so one year demolition delay while other means and methods are investigated to save the structure, perhaps moving it or repurposing it or whatever.
Or even salvaging the materials from it.
Right, or at the least documenting it photographically and, you know, in a, in a professional manner. Uh, there's no restriction, by the way, on interior renovations to the structure. The principal focus is on maintaining the view, if you will, of passersby that could still be the story for structure that was there before.
Right.
The existing structure is the only one that would be, uh, traditional, whatever you call it. A two-family and o- over on the two-family, right, that's its current setup, it's not a side by side. It's not a, it's not, it's a I'm not sure. Well, so the
It's a stack, it's a stack.
It's a stack, right? People in different areas, different states, all the different, so it's one on top of the other as opposed to a side by side, right? Which is different than all the other jobs, so that's another consideration.
One thing we didn't get to, at least here, verbal presentation. These units are for sale.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah, exactly.
This will be a condominium structure.
That's correct, so i- in the context of a rental structure, if you did restrict twenty five percent, a hundred percent of all of the units, it counts for the town's affordable housing inventory, that's not the case here. This would be condominium circumstance, where there would be a loan association, and the units would be sold.
Yes. Um, go ahead.
I had, I just question, I don't know, are we gonna dig more into the roof water treatment as well? Because I was curious about the, what that's rated more like, how, is there an overflow as well?
So, uh, I can, uh, mark it to that, but you're gonna have a peer reviewer here who's gonna really dig into that.
Okay.
So, why don't I?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I wanna, I'll jump to that for a moment. So the town, with the assistance of of the planning department, has reached out to the five engineers that are on the town's approved list with a request for proposal for peer review in connection with this application. I'm I'm not going to read the entire RFP, we'll certainly make it available to you. But in in terms of bullet points, what we are asking for a proposal for our engineer, wh- whoever we hire, to review would be, obviously, the existing conditions and the engineering plans contained in the application. The notice of intent, the stormwater situation at the property, the traffic plan at the property, infrastructure review, the big guns of infrastructure being water and septic, landscape and lighting. Jeff, we will absolutely share this with you.
Well, the reasoning, are you done with that?
No, I'm not. The list of waivers submitted by the applicant and obviously, uh, how that evolves in the course of our hearings. The proposal's conformance with the project eligibility letter, any performance guarantee to the extent one may become necessary. And I, and then some, some more.
So I just wanted to, thank you for sharing that with me, I was, I was not, uh, knowledgeable of what the, what the scope of the RFP was.
Sure.
The, um, I'd I'd like the board to consider the, uh, section of its comprehensive permit regulations that deal with the selection of uh, um, peer review consultants. As I, as I read it, uh.
Wait. Go ahead. Could you direct me specifically to?
Sure, so so on page five, section four point zero one. Not of your zoning bylaw.
Yeah, I don't have these in front of me, yeah.
But of your, uh, I'll 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 share with you mine.
That would be fantastic, I know that, because as you're aware and as we've discussed in the past, there are, there are some differing interpretations within, let's say, this building, these regulations, so I'm glad we're covering this.
Okay, so, and I'll read it because we only have one copy, we're listening. Section four, four point, uh, zero one. Uh, get it in front of me, you're on. It's whenever possible, the board shall work, shall work cooperatively with the applicant to identify appropriate consultants and to negotiate payment of the consultant fees. Alternatively, the board may, by a majority vote, require that the applicant pay a reasonable project review fee of a sufficient sum to enable the board to retain consultants chosen by the board well. So what my point is here is, it appears as if there needs to be a vote on who the peer review consultant is going to be. Um, there appears to be language that says, whenever possible, boards to work with us in selection of that individual, negotiation of that contract. Alternatively, if you don't wanna work with us, you can hire whoever you want. That amount, the amount of that fee has to be reasonable when you're gonna charge us a fee. And the reason why I I point that out is, these review consultant fees could become, uh, particularly overwhelming from time to time, and, uh, and I, and the way I read the language is, if you, if you don't wanna include this in the process, you have to give us a fee, you have to live by it. It's not that, I don't, I don't read it to be hourly fee, I read it to be a project review fee. And if the board goes over, it's on the board to determine how they're gonna get paid the excess. That's how I, that's how I view that. So I think that, and I know that Cindy's gonna wanna look at that, and I don't expect that she's gonna comment on it to see and make sure, but I just would like the board to put some thought into that. Um, and we're more than happy to work with the board in the selection of the individual.
Sure.
Um. But I think that's an issue.
Okay, let me clarify some of what I would say first. The, the town, I should say, reached out to its, the five engineers on the town's list, I cannot have that list in front of me, that the town has pre-approved and has worked with in the past, yes.
So just, just briefly, you mentioned the planning board in that discussion.
Yep. Yep.
Nowhere in your rules gives the planning board the authority to choose who that person is.
Okay.
Your rules only
I think you're gonna like what I have to say, if you, if you let me finish it.
Yep.
Planning board is not choosing a peer review engineer. The planning board did absolutely suggest that we should be hiring a peer review engineer. I think we are absolutely going to be hiring some measure, measure, a peer review engineer. And in coordination with myself and the building department and the planning office, we sent RFPs at no cost to the applicant, to all five of the engineers on our list. We did not hire an engineer, we not, this, we didn't give them license to spend any money. Before we engage an engineer and start spending what is potentially your money, we're going to talk about that.
Yeah.
Absolutely. If you feel that are, there are certain aspects of what we want reviewed by a peer review engineer that we shouldn't need reviewed by an engineer, we're going to talk about that. And we're going to come to that conclusion. I don't know the total cost for that, I don't know if you're going to think that the total cost for that is reasonable. But we're going to talk about that. Um, I don't plan on this board, and I do agree with you that it is the decision of this board doing any of that without not just giving you notice in advance, but giving you a chance to comment in advance.
Thank you.
Of course. Um. In that regard, I think we plan on entirely staying consistent with this document.
The one thing I'm gonna, uh, point out, the document, that has so many documents in the town are either, you know, a little outdated or what, or maybe could have been drafted with better wording. And that, and that's, I have no comment on that whatsoever, I, it's just that
I do. I don't have a tab.
It's just that I happened to notice in my preparations for the meeting, uh, on this subject is uh, the Code of Mass Regulations that governs the procedure of hearings is what gives the authority to the board to adopt those regulations.
Yes.
And the, and the Code of Mass Regulations is, uh, uh, the seven sixty CMR fifty six point oh five. And the Code of Mass Regulations, I'm sure, has been revised from time to time since those were approved. Uh, and I noticed that there was an additional section concerning the scope of the peer reviewers, so you just identified, I don't know, seven or eight different items, the scope.
Yep.
And I just, uh, I would encourage the board to look at the, uh, regulation on that. And that would be in, uh, seven sixty CMR fifty six point oh five, number five, I think B is a B. So, um, just wanna take a look at that.
Cindy, are you with us?
Yeah.
Fantastic, did you catch that last part?
Yes, I did, seven sixty CMR fifty six point oh five, check on the peer review uh, CMR and how consistent your policy is with it.
Right.
Yeah.
And our, and our agreement, I'll Yeah. I'm not giving up yet on giving them a second to discuss. I'm not giving up yet on, I'll subray
Yeah.
On what we should and shouldn't have peer reviewed and, and how much it should cost. But if we do, and we may, we'll, we'll figure it out, and, and Cindy will certainly help us take a look at that.
And I don't, I I I don't mean to be talking to anyone on the board. What my, my point is, is that, uh, uh, basically, everything that's an issue with this project, that's part of the project application is fair game for scope of review.
Yeah.
Right? I think where the, I think where the regulations are basically saying is, if the board wants to go out and hire its own engineer to look at some issue that isn't the scope of the application or something to that effect, you can't, you know, that's that's, that's where, that's where the problem arises, and I don't expect that from this board.
Right.
But I just, I just figured, since we're talking about it, we should get it out on the table.
Of course. In that regard.
Quickly.
Yep. Stormwater.
Yep.
Stormwater is gonna be peer reviewed, right? Um, here's my
This is, yeah.
Yep. The, a less intensive review of your application against the notice of intent is, that's gonna be more of the opening pages of our peer reviewers report. Traffic is going to be peer reviewed.
Yeah. There's gonna be multiple review engineers.
Yeah, I, well, and I, I'm gonna try to limit those a little bit, but I, I don't I don't want how many different review engineers we hire to take away from the overall picture of the review. And also, through a few sources, I've heard that if I wanted to hire the best person out there for traffic, I couldn't, because you already hired them.
Yeah, our traffic engineer is, is, has acted as the town's peer review engineer on multiple
So, I'm hopeful that we find a reviewer that can say, this all looks great, I'd like some more information on this and that, and these are the areas of concern that I don't feel they touched on. And I'm, I'm hopeful that we don't need to recreate the wheel. Infrastructure, specifically setback with wastewater, obviously, is going to be peer reviewed. Landscape and lighting, it's part of the RFP. Landscape and lighting, it's part of the RFP. We'll get into whether or not we need that peer reviewed. I'm not so sure with this type of project and with how much of it is setback. We're gonna hear from some of butters, that might not be an extensive area of peer review. Uh, and the rest of it is somewhat administrative. Performance guarantees, that's, that's a byproduct of the rest of the peer review and things like that. Uh, I don't think there's going to be a lot of areas of contention there on the peer review. We will keep you apprised of personal response to the RFP, the materials that they provide in their response, and we'll look at the fees. If, if two peer reviewers' proposals are equal in all other regards, we're not going to pick the more expensive one, just pick the more expensive one.
Did you mention what the empty response by?
The peer reviewers?
Yeah.
The response.
Uh, well, I am not so sure we did, but they are aware of the application and how urgent it was.
I think there was a response, we were trying that, at least on the final, final topic of the session.
Is that trying? Can't check now, and I, I'm reading the more official, it, it may have been in, in the cover article, I don't. Response is due to the town by five P M on May third, which, if somebody comes in on May fourth or fifth or sixth, we're probably gonna look at their proposal too. I, obviously, things are moving pretty quickly.
Yep.
Of course. Do, we think, I have, I have two statements from other boards of town that I wanna read, and then I wanna open it up to other town officials.
Yep.
Make sense? Read through these quickly. These letters are part of the file. The first is from our conservation commission, sent in by Amy Walker, our town's conservation agent. I've reviewed the forty B application by Salt Metal Development and Situate LLC for the reference property dated March thirty first, twenty twenty two, and offered the following comments. An area of resource delineation, I'm going to skip over the citations uh, for the time being, obviously, this is in the file. For two ninety seven Old Oak and Bucket Road site, was reviewed and approved as an order of resource area delineation by the Situate Conservation Commission on January twenty third, twenty twenty, for the applicant identified as Love Dale LLC of Dupesbury, Massachusetts. The order approved existing condition plan of land at two seventy nine Old Oak and Bucket Road, Situate, revised January first, twenty twenty. The site was confirmed to contain bordering vegetated wetlands and a top of inland bank and intermittent stream. Additionally, a notice of intent for the property two eighty one Old Oak and Bucket was reviewed and approved as an order of conditions by the Situate Conservation Commission on January eleventh, twenty twenty one, for applicant identified as Love Dale of Dupesbury. The order approved a temporary crossing for the purposes of perk test and approved resource areas on that portion of the site. The proposed duplex development will require submission of a notice of intent and review of the NOI by all applicable state and local agencies under Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act due to the proposed disturbance within a hundred foot buffer to bordering vegetated wetlands. The review of the NOI by the Massachusetts Department of Protection and Situate Concom will evaluate whether or not the proposed project meets the interests of the WPA and may result in approval of the project by an order of conditions or denied if the project does not meet the WPA and three ten CMR. The review will include evaluation of the proposed development with respect to the eight interests of the WPA, including protection of public and private water supply, protection of groundwater, flood control, storm damage prevention, pollution, and wildlife habitat. The review of the NOI by Situate Concom will include a stormwater management standards review per three ten CMR ten. The project is required to meet the most current D E P stormwater handbook in effect at time of submission of the NOI, and if at all possible, Situate stormwater bylaw. Most stringent rainfall data should be utilized in design of stormwater infiltration systems. A peer review of the NOI and proposed stormwater design will be performed on behalf of the Situate Conservation Commission by a qualified engineering consultant. The town of Situate Wetlands Protection Bylaw and Stormwater Bylaw are more stringent than the WPA based on initial representations by the developer. It appears the developer will not be meeting the local no-touch buffer setback of fifty feet and considerable waivers are requested for sensitive watershed protection area. Considerable scrutiny should be applied to the review by the Situate Z B A and the S C C. Yes?
Go ahead, just, uh, thank you for sharing that.
Uh, we'll look into that later, we haven't provided with it yet until just now. So just submitted on the twenty fifth and came to me yesterday.
I, 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 I made no, I made no wish to add, so. Uh, my, my statement is the limited jurisdiction that was stated in that letter. The town of Situate has its own wetland bylaw, its own wetland regulations, which, as she indicated, was more, are more stringent than state regulations in certain respects. The jurisdiction set forth in those documents is your jurisdiction. And she, as she made certain comments already, obviously, is going to provide input to this board for that jurisdiction. And the jurisdiction of the notice of intent is limited more broadly to the state's regulation, the state's jurisdiction. So I just wanted to be clear on that. I know you know it, but for the audience, pretty much.
Yes.
Yep.
So, just to essentially state that again, this board is tasked with all approvals with respect to the town's zoning bylaw and other ordinances in regards to the approval of this project. Concom will hear this application with respect to state environmental, to use a broad word, regulations. They will be the governing body for that in conjunction with the state, is my understanding. That's a little unique because typically, Concom would be the administrative board for certain of the town's environmental ordinances. Unfortunately, in my opinion, we are the town's governing body for those environmental ordinances here. And I would agree with you that reasons would dictate, would warrant a more specific comment and suggestion to this board from, from Concom and the Board of Health, which is likely to come and be more educated once we've gone for peer review. Quickly, this is from Karen Joseph of the Planning Department. I'm going to, I'll summarize some of what is extremely repetitive from the Concom segment, but the entire site for the cottages at Old Oak and Bucket is in the Water Resource Protection District with some of the front portion in the zone two. Water is an important issue in the town of Situate, and section five twenty of the zoning bylaw helps protect the Water Resource Protection District. To that end, waivers requested for the Water Resource Protection District should be carefully considered. It should be verified that areas of natural slopes exceeding twenty five percent are not disturbed. Land uses that render impervious area on a lot, more than fifteen percent or twenty five hundred square feet, whichever is greater, are not allowed unless a system for artificial recharge is provided that will not result in degradation of the groundwater quality. The site is in the Water Resource Protection District and Zone Two, not a zone A. A stamp certification should be provided that water quality, quality is not being degraded. Neither of these two requirements makes the project uneconomic. Other requirements of the Water Resource Protection include ninety percent T S S removal. Infiltration devices must have a three foot between the bottom of the infiltration device and the maximum groundwater elevation. Rooftop runoff must be designed to recharge the first one inch of rainfall and dry wells are prohibited. A waiver was requested to allow dry wells. It is uncertain if the other items have been met. Protecting the town's water supply is vital. The project eligibility letter for mass housing dated August tenth, twenty twenty one indicated that the applicant should be prepared to provide detailed information relative to proposed water use, potential impacts on existing capacity, and appropriate mitigation. The letter is also indicated, excuse me, the letter also indicated the applicant should be prepared to provide detailed information regarding the management of the open space for the project. I have not found that these were provided. Back to that paragraph. Compliance with section seven fifty one of the zoning bylaw, low-impact development standards is required where substantial area of the project is located within the Water Resource Protection District. Low-impact best management practices should be employed for the project and the post-construction peak runoff rate for the one-year twenty-four-hour rain event shall not exceed the existing peak runoff rate for the same storm event from the site under the existing conditions. The one-year storm rate has not been calculated. Most of the site will be clear-cut for the development with most of the development and buildings within twenty feet of the property line or twenty-five feet of the bordering vegetated wetlands. With minimal grading shown, thus impacts the site are potentially to the property line and in some cases, within feet of the bordering vegetated wetlands. This is suggesting that the thirty-four units are too dense for this site. It is not known at this time the volume of fill material that will be needed to be brought in for the development at the site as high groundwater within the models between eighteen inches and forty-four inches and stormwater management design must be taken into account. A planted buffer around the project where it abuts adjacent residential development and site boundaries is essential to reduce sound, noise, light, and density impacts from the development. That's the end of the letter. I, I do wanna go back to water use. Water use, the availability of fresh water is obviously an area of concern in Situate. Do you feel Karen is correct regarding her comment that the project eligibility letter stated that you should be prepared to discuss proposed water use?
So what occurred during the project eligibility timeframe was uh, the selectmen are the authorities that have, that when you file an application for project eligibility.
Yep.
The selectmen provide the comments, you respond to those comments, the comments get incorporated and responses into uh, a package basically that gets sent, sent up to the state. Part of the comments that the selectmen made were water-related comments. And the project eligibility letter indicated it was sufficient, was sufficient bar for that process and that they, the state recognizes that the town's gonna be looking for us to address that issue. So we're, we're prepared to address it.
You're prepared to address it, meaning you want us to ask you to address it more specifically? Have you already looked into the water use? Have you, do you have any pre-existing opinions on Situate's capacity, both generally and at the site? I'm.
Do you want to take this one?
Mark, are you, are you, are you address that, uh, all those questions in the letter report?
So, so when we see Karen's comment, letter that you just read today.
Yeah, yeah.
And I tasked Mark, uh, put him away from other, other matters and to.
No, you weren't, you weren't sitting waiting for that specific question.
Yeah, no, I.
Actually, I was talking, uh, any, any of, any of that earlier in this process before you submitted to the Z B A? I had, uh, prepared a document, a report.
Which I have, do you want that?
Yeah. Do you have enough copies?
I only have one copy of that, unfortunately.
But you can not. This one?
Yeah, you can take that.
Over there, yeah. And we're, we're happy to go more and get on this subject.
Sure, having as. This, this will likely be a good starting point, a good start. And we have not yet, and Janine, correct me if I'm wrong, we haven't heard from D E to P, D P W, excuse me, or water, water, um, water resource, excuse me. No, we will, we will reach out to them. We want to hear from them on this. I, this is more of a comment to the public. I, I'm going to make sure this board gets an as educated opinion from inside and potentially outside of town on the situation with our water and how this development will impact it as possible. Without having that educated opinion yet, we don't have enough water, as much water as we would like for the houses that we have now.
Amen.
Okay, I, we are going, we are going to get you. You can't stop building in Situate. And in the grand scheme of things, in the terms of our town, I'll be very surprised if one of the experts that I'm going to speak to, and we can get to speak on this, states that these thirty-four units move the needle in the grand scheme of things. Now, may these thirty-four units move the needle in the, in the scheme of the water that can be effectively delivered to this neighborhood? Possibly, that's a question I'm going to seek to have answers. That is something to keep in mind and I, as you see, I, I want you to know thinking on that front and what I am thinking on that front will certainly be modified as we hear more from those members of town and potentially a peer reviewer or whoever um, that knows a lot more about the specifics of the water system than certainly than I do. Unless any of you have anything to add, I'd like to go to Bob, if he has any questions. And Bob, it is not a speak now or forever hold your peace situation. And then I'd like to open it up, I don't know that we have any, I see one of our select board present, but I, I'd like to open up to any other town officials or, or members of the town or members of the, the town government and administration of Norwell before we go to the public. Bob?
Thank you, um, Bob Vogel, Building Commissionally, zoning enforcement officer for the town of Situate. Just a few points, there's pretty obvious side that leave. Uh, the structures themselves and the process that goes into documenting and constructing those structures will have to meet all aspects of the building code and town of Situate process regulations from the building permit application, the documentation that goes with that, through permitting, through the inspection process, and finally, the documentation, the process of issuing certificates of occupancy at the end of the, of the project. Uh, the project, having said that, will be controlled construction, what's called controlled construction with initial and final affidavits required from the applicants, architects, and engineers. So in fact, those licensed professionals are ultimately responsible for the project being built correctly to code and for the contract documents. That happens on every project beyond a single family home typically, so it's something that we're all very used to dealing with. Uh, one other part of this will be towards the end of what the board is sort of going through here with the applicant. There'll be conditions placed on the comprehensive permit by the Z B A. ZBA and those will include things like hours of operation, dust control on the site during construction, construction-related traffic and parking activity. In general, those conditions, at least the ones that I've just spoken of, are to mitigate the construction, very construction, impact on the neighborhood as, as much as achievable and reasonable. And the enforcement, if we have to enforce, which hopefully will not be the case, but that will be my office and my duty as well. We'll use precedents, I believe, established already by the forty B developments are now ongoing in Town Stockbridge Landing and Huronburg Meadow to come up with at least a skeleton list of those requirements and we can flush that out specifically as we go along. I'd say to anybody in the audience, by the way, that Stockbridge Landing off of Stockbridge Road where Greenfield Lane plugs into Stockbridge Road is a pretty close mirror, although about twice the size, of what this project will be like. And if any of you would like to take a, take a drive up there to visit it, you'll get a pretty good sense of what this development is, it's going to be when it's finished. Stockbridge Landing is mostly built out, some of the units are already inhabiting. The landscaping hasn't been done, so it's pretty big, so don't take that part to heart. But the scale and the, and the density is very similar if you want to take a look at it.
Thank you, Bob. Do we have anyone in the audience here in their, physically in their representative capacity of, of a board or department of town? I'm not sure we do. All right. If anyone from town and hello Karen is here, if you please turn your cameras on, that would be helpful and then you can raise your real or virtual hand and we'll try to get to each of you one by one. Ms. Canfield.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, this is sort of fun to do this, but I apologize for not being in the room. This is a super important conversation for the town. With your permission, Mr. Chair, I just had a couple of general questions and a couple of specific questions. The board has done a great job of answering a number of those, but it would be really helpful to the community.
I'm sorry, just, just first, you're, you're a member of the town select board.
Yes, I'm sorry, let me, I'll introduce, I'm Karen Canfield, I'm a member of the select board of the town of Situate. I serve in that capacity as the liaison to this board as well as the planning board and a number of others. So in that capacity, I will be representing myself because our board obviously does not influence the decisions of the SBA, but we were encouraged to come to this hearing because there are some questions that I would like to report back to my board as this process continues. Is that appropriate, Mr. Chair?
Please, go ahead.
Okay. And one of the first questions is, if you wouldn't mind, if the developer could give us a little background on your experience, you know, it's an LLC and it doesn't tell us who you are, where you've come from and, and how your, your experience can bring, what your experience can bring to this development. We're a small community and we've, you know, we partner with, this is a large development for our, our community. So that would be my first general question and I do have a couple of follow-ups.
Sure. I'm Dan Lovendale, I represent the Salt Metal Development. I live here on the South Shore, have my whole life. We, we, we've been through many construction projects through the years, this is our first go-around through the forty B process. We came to that decision based upon site and site conditions. We felt it was the best use of the project, of the, of the, of the site, of the constraints of the site. Mark, the engineer and I, we sat down and, and we, we took a look at every option and this, it, it, it came to be the best option for what, what we had. We, we put, as you saw from Jeremy's plans that he submitted, it's, it's, a lot of thought and effort has been put into it to, to come up with a, a specific site plan that fits the needs of the town through, you know, there's an acute housing need for affordable housing and, in housing in general. And I think this, this absolutely satisfies that. I think we need to, you know, move forward and, and make best use of land. We need to, we need to, we need to do more multifamily developments and more affordable developments for folks that, that, that need opportunities. So that's where we come from as far as where, why we're here and why we started the forty B process. Personally, like I said, I grew up on the South Shore from Weymouth. I sit here and I'm looking at the, the town crest and, and I've, I've come to Situate my entire life, my grandparents were the lighthouse keepers for many years, Ruth and George Downton. So I, I've become to Situate and, and spent in beaches, days on the beach and family cookouts and so I am a member of, of the community. I, I've lived here, I have relationships, I have everything. So that's a big part of what was, what was put into this was, is it a place that, a development that I would want in my community? And, and it is in my community. And it, and it is, we're very proud of what we came up with, we're very proud of our plan and, and we feel through the whole process, you'll see that, how much thought, effort, time has gone into it. And, yeah, so I think that's basically it and did I answer your question okay?
Yes, thank you so much. It's nice to hear your voice and, and, and your input on that. As some of you have already alluded to, the board was tasked with presenting a letter to the state and I think you've already outlined what our concerns are and, you know, generally speaking, you're right, we do want to encourage some more density where appropriate and we do need more housing. But I think the chair has well articulated and the letter from our town planner that this is extremely sensitive site and our water resources are critical, both in consumption but even more importantly in quality. So I would assume that the board, I can tell from the comments already, will take those concerns very, very seriously as will, you know, all of us observing the process. You already noted the egress and access, those are concerns. And we talked about, okay, oh, I had a, a very, sort of a specific question that I just don't, I, I haven't thought about for affordable forty B application. So this is clearly going to end up being some kind of condo association to, to, you know, go forward governing this. Do the affordable units contribute to the same, how do they contribute to the upkeep and maintenance of the HOA that would presumably be in place? I, I honestly just don't know the answer to that.
So I could take, I could take a second. Go ahead. Great question, Mrs. Canfield. The, the answer to the question is the condominium statute requires that the percentage of ownership in the common area and facilities of the condominium is to be based upon the market value of the, of the various units. So in the case of this development, there will be a document that's reported against the title, which is a restriction that indicates that eight or nine, whatever the appropriate number of units are that are deed restricted to be affordable cannot be sold to anybody unless they qualify with the eighty percent income of the area ratio that's set forth in the statute. And so the, the short answer to the question after the long explanation is the percentages in the condominium associations will be calculated in a manner that's proportionate to the requirement of the statute. So they, they pay less, they'll pay less, yeah. I need to listen to myself talk, I can't say that.
Right, so it's deed restricted, the value will be deed restricted going forward and therefore their percentage will be, reflect that, is that what you just said?
Yeah. Thank you, thank you very much. They pay less for the maintenance than the non-affordable units. They don't pay the same percentage less that they had to pay for their house, that's the biggest discount, but the discount in terms of the maintenance of common areas, a discount continues.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then one last question and then a comment was, I, what's the total acreage of that site? I, I missed that in all of the presentation.
Just over eleven, under eleven and a half, eleven-two and change, I think, eleven-point-two-two.
Okay. Great, well, thank you. And my last comment is, is really for the, the ZBA board. Just so you know, after special town meeting in November, we will be repopulating our bylaw review committee, so if you've got some spare time, we'll be looking to you guys for that. Thank you very much, I'd be interested to hear what the, the neighbors have to say.
Thank you. I think that's the only town official we have. Just to check, any, any other town official from Situate or Norwell? And for those of you who might be wondering, the site of Butts, the town of Norwell, so they are interested as well. Does not go up here, so if you're in the room or online.
She's there, but she's not responding, Mary, Mary now, well, from the local.
Really seeing a portion of people actually on.
That's right. Thirty-nine. So nobody in the room, so the question is online. Well, if someone raises their hand in a moment, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to call on them. So unless another town official raises their hand, we'd like to hear from the public. I, I need to reiterate that we'd like to keep it productive. I would approve you to be specific. If we spend a lot of time on this is too many units, we'd be specific about the number of units, but just it's too big, it's too dense, Situate isn't what it used to be, things like that, we're going to lose time on specific comments that will help us potentially shape this application so that the town has a better voice in what is built. Please keep that in mind, it's what I would be forming a group of neighbors if I still lived where I used to, to make sure. And then also, we need to keep it collective. This is what these gentlemen do for a living, all of them. And they are not here to wrong anyone, they are not here to cheat or confuse anyone. They are here to, for real estate development, which we may not like real estate developers sometimes, but then we do like them sometimes, so let, let's keep that in mind. Your name and your address clearly, please, when we call on you, so we can keep a record of that, Janine needs to hear, she's keeping the minutes. And then please do keep in mind, you can direct your questions to the board and we'll, we'll help guide how and, and when they're answered. And, and lastly, we will be digging into a number of these issues specifically, so some of your questions, comments, and concerns will be addressed at that point and you may want to at that point comment on what you have heard. This is not the last time by any means that we will be hearing from the public. I would, I'm sure that some of you plan on attending the, any successive hearings. Tonight, in my opinion, your comments would be best, you'd make the most out of your time before the mic that we're not going to hand you by raising a point that allows this applicant or this board to do some homework before the next meeting to get you more specifics. That would be the most effective use of your comments tonight. With that, I'm probably going to bounce around so we don't do everyone in the audience or everyone on Zoom. Zoom folks, if you can raise your hand or your hand on Zoom, because it does pop up on the screen, that function is down along the bottom, or you can turn on your video and raise your actual hand, we will get to you. And folks here, we do it just like school and you can raise your hands as well. So I would like to open section of the hearing for public comment and yes, ma'am, again, just your name and address, please.
Karen Hannigan, address thirty-seven Maryland Road, right off Old Oakin Bucket. This might be like a real general question, but I'm having a hard time understanding if it's already been approved by conservation or not.
Sure.
I guess it's my.
So it is, it has not been approved by conservation yet. The curve ball there is, the approval that conservation needs to give is with respect to state regulations. The town regulations that would typically require conservation approval are going to be approved or not here before this board. If you're wondering that, that doesn't seem to make much sense, I might agree with you, but that is how forty B was drafted by the state legislature.
I just, yeah.
Yes.
Liz O'Reilly, one seventy-nine Maple Street.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions, some more general question. I know that you're all maybe among the person that did the traffic study and I did read the traffic study.
Yes.
And the traffic study was done in August, November, and December of twenty-one. Anybody in this room knows, Old Oakin Bucket was either closed, detoured, drive at your own risk, and the signs for uneven road are still up. I don't think this is an accurate picture of what that road's going to be like. In the report, they actually said the average speed is thirty, the speed limit is thirty, most people go thirty-eight. Well, let's have it done after Old Oakin Bucket's paid.
Well, they, they weren't paying attention when I was tracking.
So it's just, and we all know in the other report, it says in it, we'll study the four-way detection, they addressed that, but the other issue is coming out of the project, that's a scenic road, so this rules and regulations on Old Oakin Bucket as far as stone walls being rebuilt, trees coming down, and you mentioned possibly a kiosk for the children to sit in. Twenty-five years ago, they had to change Tac Factory Pond and expand the road because it was too dangerous for the children to wait for the school bus at the top of Tac Factory. You have all these two and three bedrooms, there were going to be children and the buses are going to be able to get down. So I have some real concerns with that. The other quick thing that I have is I live on Maple Street, which is Butts and acreage that's supposed to be used as part of the reserve septic. I cannot find anywhere in the report the perk test for two eighty-one Old Oakin Bucket or the Title V for the sale of that property. I've gone through that stack.
Sure, so ju-just to answer on the Title V, Bob, correct me, is Title V triggered on undeveloped land?
This is the, how the, no, the, the rental was sold.
They're both two, not one.
Two eighty-one is the rental house.
Okay.
Still in it.
Yeah.
That was sold.
Yeah.
And I can't find the Title V, I went to, to private public health.
I, I don't remember answering to that, I think.
Okay.
We'd have to.
Yeah, well, just one second, I'm sorry.
And then I can't find the perk test anywhere in the document for two eighty-one Old Oakin Bucket.
Sure, so I, I think though, just to be clear, you're asking about.
Two different things.
Right, so a perk test for two eighty-one Old Oakin Bucket, which wouldn't.
Was the acreage, is probably acreage that backs up to my house.
So you mean the perk test for the proposed system here?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
That, that's going to be reviewed significantly.
Okay.
By our engineers for the project here in connection with, we were, they were calling it infrastructure, the, the bulk of which is going to be the proposed septic system for the. the the bulk of which is going to be the proposed septic system for this development.
All right, one more question.
Yes.
So I was also wondering if there's gonna be a twenty one E done on any of the property? The two seventy nine property had an old house on it with old cars and boats and oil things and whatever, and two seventy nine still currently has big galvanized barrels out there, old boats, garbage. There's a lot of stuff on that property that's been there a long time.
Sure, so again, you're referring to state environmental
Right.
regulations and ordinances.
Right.
So I I do wanna clarify before we answer that question specifically that while this board is going to be the administrative body for all town bylaws and regulations, we are, nothing that we approved is giving this applicant any relief or any, you don't have to pay attention to any state or federal ordinance or regulation. Jeff, would you agree?
Alright, that's a hundred percent correct.
Okay, so whether or not that is is necessary or will be done certainly isn't something we could comment on. Maybe the applicant could, but even if we had an opinion on whether or not it would need it, that because it's state or federal is not before this board.
So other than the applicant, who makes that decision, is it conservation or?
Nope, so again, it sounds like you're you're referring to something that would involve state E and the EPA.
Okay, thank you.
Of course. Sure.
So pardon my, uh, questions, this might actually help a little more.
So name and address.
Oh, sorry, William Nelson, thirty eight Maryland Road, thank you. So I did a little bit of research, and Mr. Lovendale's company bought two seventy nine thousand ninety. And then Salt Meadow bought it from him for a hundred dollars. Now two eighty one, which is owned by Sean Harris, former slacker, he sold it, huh? And don't I write? That was sold to Salt Meadow for seven hundred and twenty one thousand dollars, began to use the air when the other one sold. So Sean's still listed as the owner.
Sorry.
Is he partners with?
Sorry, when you say still listed.
So these are current owners.
You're referring to the assessor's records.
Yeah, just thought.
And then, eh, I think I got this, and the and the deed you're referring to is is from this January.
I just thought it's two days ago.
Yeah, yes, so sorry, what I'm getting at is, the assessor's records are not updated instantaneously. In 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 many regards, it is is quite the opposite.
So my question was, to ask that, is he still the owner of that property, is he partner, is he partner owner of Salt Meadow itself?
So you're you're asking if if Mr. Harris is involved, partner in the project?
So the property's been acquired by our client, and Mr. Harris has zero involvement in any of this, he sold it, it's gone, it's over.
Okay. That would make sense, why didn't he go Title V? If he was still owner of it, then he wouldn't have to do a Title V inspection on it, but when she was asked about the Title V.
I I think I see where you're going, and I think you're alleging that folks are skirting state regulations.
No, no, if he was still owner, if I owned my house, I wouldn't have to get a Title V on it if someone else was owner of my house.
Sure, it gets more complicated because he sold it, but put it this way.
Yeah.
When he sold it for that sum of money, everything, he paid four dollars and fifty six cents per thousand of it in transfer taxes.
Yes.
That money changed hands, if that money didn't change hands, they paid a lot of money to make it look like it did.
No, but I'm assuming if he was part of, cause the
Sure.
Salt Meadow developing part.
Yeah.
Cause his name's still on that.
Right, no, so the the reason his name is still appearing on the assessor's records is because the assessor's records haven't yet been updated to reflect that conveyance, which is entirely common throughout the Commonwealth for it to take at least that long.
Alright, and I have another thing, was didn't the fire department shut down the whole idea this while ago? Because there wasn't proper room for the apparatus? I thought they did a, when they first started this whole process, the fire department looked into it, and they said it was a no go.
As far as I'm aware, this is the start of that whole process, but Jeff, do you have any information on prior interaction with the fire department?
I have, uh, no information that the fire department has weighed in on this at all. Uh, in this process of the only process really that has begun, which is, maybe they maybe they made some comment during the site eligibility process.
Yeah.
But I I, uh, I don't know anything about it.
Yeah, so this this application is relatively new. As as developments go and as forty Bs go, it is still in the somewhat early stages, and I I'm not aware, and we've reached out to the fire department, and I'm sure we will hear from them.
Was there one before they made it to Salt Meadows?
Right. There certainly could have been a a prior attempt at developing this site, which is, this application is not connected to that.
No, well, same people, that's different.
I
That's what I'm asking, cause the owner that owned it when it happened is that, they were.
Mr. Lovendale, have you made a prior attempt at developing this site? No, so how long you had an ownership interest in the site?
Um, we bought two seventy nine, I forget exactly what the close date was, but a year later, we closed on two eighty one.
Okay, so we're talking about two, two years.
It was.
Okay.
It's if the documents are of the correct.
Yes.
Two thousand nineteen or two seven, uh,
Yep.
two thousand nineteen or two seventy nine.
Yep.
And two eighty one was the end here.
Right, he just said, he just said within large two or three years, so it's exactly what he just said.
But when did this, when did this whole
Sorry, ma'am.
When did this whole, um, process start for this development?
The initial submission to the state occurred, I I did read it before, but, um,
I can't remember the submission, I just, uh, I know the site eligibility letter was issued last March.
Sure, so I
So I believe the process began sometime right around in the winter.
Thank, thank you, to be honest, we're throwing a lot of dates around, I, to what end?
Well, cause it came up to us, where we live on Maryland Road, back in two thousand nineteen.
When you say it, I'm sorry.
A proposal of a condo complex on that property.
Okay.
That's what I'm asking.
Well, I I I I would imagine that, um, maybe Mr. Nelson might have received a notice in the mail from the Conservation Commission in relation to the notice of intent applications that were alluded to in the AMRAP application. My guess is that that's probably what he's speaking about.
Sure.
Mr. Lovendale has not applied to any of the board for approval for condominium development out there.
Sure, so you you follow that, it's it's, uh, that would have been in connection with the early stages of this application. The lull that you saw was due to state approval, I'm overgeneralizing, for them to be able to come here, not as far as I'm aware, the fire department shutting it down. And ma'am, you have your same address?
Yep, my name is Jeanne Jackson, I live at thirty eight Grayland Road.
Sure.
Um, my family goes back to great, great grandparents live in here. My father is a member of the, um, he's a trustee of the Historical Society in this town. And he's on the Chamber of Commerce, so I have a lot of family ties to this town. We live in this beautiful house, I work three jobs to afford. And we bought a beautiful conservation park in this town where we don't have a ton of neighbors, so it's nice where we live. We do have concerns over the water, I just wanna make that a general statement. But I'd also like to make a statement of the or a question more so, and I wanna confirm that the fire department is going to have to evaluate this property moving forward and confirm that they can make it down that property, and that it is sufficient to hold together.
I'm sorry? This is from their initial site application, it's just a general comment by the fire department.
Oh, sure. We can, so the the fire department, I would have received notice of this at the initial stages, when we were talking about the board of selectmen, commenting on the initial notice of intent, which was a couple of years ago now, the fire department was notified. When when we get an application, any application, all town departments are notified. The fire department was notified of this application, they have not responded yet. I would be very surprised if they did not, and we are going to ping them again.
They will respond.
They will.
They 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 have.
I'm not aware that they
They have to.
ever had it on something like this. This is the project, is this project eligible, this is dated August tenth, twenty twenty one, this is from Mass Housing. That would be it. In the statement, it says, the municipality also provided comments from the Situate Fire Department. The fire department emphasized that the project must be designed to ensure the maximum level of emergency access and fire protection. They outlined a variety of requirements for the project, including fire lanes, sufficient roadway widths, sufficient parking spaces between the buildings to accommodate public safety vehicles, and a system of hybrids and looped water main. We know some of that has been considered in the design, because you can see the system of driveways, no big turns, no switchbacks there. I'm sure that that works for the project as well, that's also beneficial to the fire department. We will hear from the fire department on this, on the project, and that will be at least touched upon by peer reviewers. We have a couple of hands raised, Mr. Manning, Sean Manning.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, hi, my name is Sean Manning, I live at two seven two Old Oak and Bucket, so directly across from this proposed development. So traffic is definitely a concern of mine, especially with three young children. But my question I wanna ask is around water, like we've mentioned, it clearly is an issue, and I think we all try our best when inevitably the restrictions come and the bans come during the one months to restrict using, you know, our water, I don't wash my car outside, I I don't, um, you know, water my lawn. My question specifically, though, is there anything in the plan for this development that mentions any sort of sprinkler system or anything like that for this property? Cause that would be a concern of mine, especially if we're trying to all cut back, and this property potentially is using, you know, more than than what we already have, thank you.
You're not seeking a waiver from the town for prohibitions of for landscaping irrigation systems, are you?
No, it's it's not on that list, yeah.
Okay, so the answer is no.
No, no sprinklers.
And we're speaking, of course, of of irrigation, landscaping sprinklers. To the extent sprinklers become necessary for state fire safety, which they probably won't given your layout, you you, that's not something that we get to tell you, you can't do.
Right. Uh, just on the issue of water, um, something that just kinda thought about is I live in the town, I deal with the water restrictions as well, it's inconvenient. I know that the town had some success last year after the failure of some kind of infrastructure with an early water ban and and, uh, what I what I also know based upon my experience as a lawyer who frequently does development in the town is that the town's drainage infrastructure is in, uh, is in constant need of repair, and we lose a tremendous amount of water that runs through our pipes due to the fact that the pipes are deteriorating and leaking, and water's not getting where it needs to be, and it's just infiltrating into the ground. That's what we call infiltration and I N I work, I can't remember exactly what the acronym is, but it's a real fundamental kind of overall larger issue in the town, and I'm sure Karen, you know, has thought about it constantly. Is is, in order to fix that infrastructure and so that we don't lose water and that we have enough water in this town, we need tax dollars to do that, because otherwise, we're going to town meeting, getting overrides, and always constantly putting, uh, Band-Aids on it. And so, one of the collateral benefits of this project is the fact, and many development projects, is is the fact that the town has bring some income in which through tax dollars would be utilized to repair these vital areas. And it would seem as if the best tax dollars to bring in actually are not residential, they probably are commercial in nature, that's where you make your money. And that's, I think, one of the reasons why there are some developments sprouting up that are mixed-use developments, and and it's a constant tension between the balancing of development and the need to bring in tax dollars. It's my point is, other than saying it that way, which is to kind of bring to light the fact that even though the development would use water, the collateral benefit is the tax dollars could be used to repair the pipes, which are the real problem.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Brand. How are you?
Oh, good, I was just trying to find the unmute, thank you. Um, Jessie Brandham at two seven, uh, two ninety seven Old Oak Bucket. And something I haven't heard brought up tonight, I'm curious, just as a parent of a young child, if sort of the impact on the school system is something that's taken into consideration, kind of with the development of the size? I'm curious if that's, you know, even something that's part of the discussion.
Sure, so we in reaching out to town departments, the school department is also contacted. We could certainly reach out to them to see if we can get a specific comment on that. I can't speak to specifics, but again, I, this is a large development for this neighborhood. I'm not certain, Bob, if if thirty four households is in in a in a larger scheme of Situate, it certainly isn't as large as the some developments that we may see or attempted developments we may see in the in the coming years.
Well, the thing, I I mean, we know of at least one on the horizon that would blow this away.
Yes.
I know, it's an interesting thing, when the middle school was first proposed, and now the elementary school consolidation with the new school is for the Mass School Building Authority. One of the requirements of that is to do a projection of student population for the town, and it's pretty rigorous, and you really have to do it well, do it with people, you know what they're doing. And our projection, at least when they did the middle school, was that the overall student population would be in decline over the next ten years. So I don't know if that's believable or not to anyone, it was a little surprising to me, but
Yeah.
that is the result of the study that I know about.
I can, I can add to that a little bit, I saw on another committee on town, the cattle. There is a study happening soon about school population and whatnot with the new school coming up, I think we funded a special town meeting. It's gonna, you know, get into school populations, but the general consensus is right now that it is dropping. So to look at this with thirty four units, a total of ninety bedrooms, um, total of sixty more kids, I don't think would make a dent in the the numbers that they've been looking at, uh, they have been in decline for a little while anyways.
And the in the scope of those studies, development and multifamily development in the town is anticipated. But we're certainly, the school board and superintendent will have the opportunity to make further public comment, to the extent they deem it necessary. You're on mute again, was was that all? Okay. Jackie.
Yes, Jackie Kalch, two sixty nine Old Oak and Bucket. Um, I live in the property that is, um, right down behind this proposed development. My concern is obviously how wet that area is and displacement. When trees are removed and such that, um, how our property is gonna be affected, and I say our, I'm in a duplex connected to two seventy one, um, and where where that water's gonna go, and we all know it's gotta go somewhere. So that's my concern.
Absolutely. Uh, so that specifically stormwater, and um that is one of the things that is absolutely going to be reviewed by a an engineer hired by the town. And we'll receive that report. That report will contain comparisons with the applicant's reports and findings on the same matter. And the and the board will be able to review that in detail. Along those same lines, there was mentioned by, I'm forgetting now if it was uh the planning board or CONCOM and what they submitted, a question about fill. Could we put some more information on the plan for infill on your list for the next meeting? Unless you'd like to comment on that.
Yeah, I just wanted to tell you that typically what's going to happen is your peer review, your civil engineer will ask us to do what we call a mass balance, okay? And it will be an additional plan sheet. And it will show the mass balance. When you think of building a road, you think of cuts and fills, okay? So we're going to wind up doing this mass balance. It'll be an additional plan sheet, and we have all that information on it.
Useful. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Sean Jerry, one seventy eight million. You say you build low-income housing. How about handicap accessible housing with disabled veterans? Accessible housing, uh, housing for elderly people that are not big mansions, I'm sorry, these big huge houses. Affordable housing for people in affordable budget. I understand that these houses are probably eight, seven, eight hundred thousand dollars. So affordable housing is four hundred thousand dollars, you take twenty percent off, four to six hundred thousand dollars. That's not affordable. It's not affordable.
Okay, um, the affordable housing calculation, the calculation for pricing with respect to what is market and what is market for these units is something that is set by the state. Set by state law. Affordable housing for veterans, affordable housing for the elderly, affordable housing for other aspects of the general population, the town's population are absolutely important issues. They are not issues that this application or that the forty B statute is seeking to address specifically. Forty B is designed to increase towns' stock of generally affordable housing. That is based on the calculation that Attorney Delise mentioned earlier. It is below eighty percent of the mean to qualify. There is a lottery. Typically, preference is given to residents, if I'm remembering correctly, and then opened up to non-residents. Those other aspects and populations for affordable housing that you're mentioning are important. Not part of this application for this hearing. The cost of the affordable units here, I I think that you might be surprised that the the reduction in price might be greater than you realize, but regardless, whether or not you or I think it's a sufficient reduction, it is set by the state and and those regulations are quite specific.
I have one other question.
Yes, please.
At that stop sign at uh Old Oak and Bucket in Maple Street, three months ago, I'm sorry, three years ago, I get hit there at forty miles an hour. Came close to death. I live three houses from that stop sign. I sit on my front porch with my handicaps, and I watch cars blow to that stop sign in trucks all day long. And if you did a study there, a traffic study, you would have noticed when you're coming from Old Oak and Bucket heading towards Norwell, you have a sign that says, slow down, bus stop ahead. Then you have another sign that says, stop sign ahead. And then twenty feet before the actual start, I'm sorry, about a hundred feet before the actual stop sign, you have a sign that says, speed limit, thirty miles an hour. The average human being driving pays attention to a sign for about two hundredths of a second. And then you read the next sign, and then you read the next sign. So I'm reading the third mile an hour sign. And then a hundred yards later, you have a stop sign. Traffic engineers should take that sign down with wrench. You'll alleviate half that problem because that's where the majority of the problems come from. People flying up there, they're not paying attention. They see that sign at thirty miles an hour. They forget all the other three signs. They look back there, and the very next thing they see is a stop sign. Huge problem.
Absolutely. Um, I'm very familiar with that stretch of road and that intersection. We're going to review the applicant's traffic report. We're going to have that peer review. We're going to hear from the police and fire department. I'm adding to my list to reach out to the corresponding departments in Norwell. And we are going to come to a conclusion, and potentially we are going to address some changes to that intersection. Nothing is off the table at this point. That is absolutely an area of concern. It's something that's going to be reviewed in more detail by this board, and it's something that's going to be reviewed in more detail and commented on by experts. Of course.
Mr. Chair.
I think Mark has.
Yes, I just wanted to comment. I I am a disabled veteran. And one thing you can do is this board, uh, when it comes to local preference. Okay, you could say, let's uh local preference uh to disabled veterans for one or two or more of the affordable units, so.
That's a great suggestion. We will absolutely, when it comes time to be talking about a lottery and things like that, we will work with council. And then those are different boards in town that probably aren't as likely to comment on layouts and septic systems that can start to comment on the lottery and things like that. We'll get affordable housing involved more at at that point, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, you do have a hand raised over here.
Yes, please, sir. Go ahead with your hand, with your actual hand up there.
Kevin, question.
Thank you. I think you're on mute, sir.
You're muted, Mr. Marshall.
Uh, Ke- Kevin, we cannot hear you. If you go down to that bottom left-hand corner, you are muted. Just could be that you do not have the correct microphone selected. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Kevin Marshall, two eighty two Old Oak and Bucket. Given that the density of this project is significantly out of character with our neighborhood, what can be done to require that this development be set back enough so that it does not change the character of our neighborhood from a visual standpoint? And and uh change the entire character of the neighborhood we've all come to love?
Sure, so I'm I'm glad you asked that question because I I had one of my notes here until we had that question that if I was still in a butter to this project, traffic's important, affordable housing is important, water's important. Selfishly, I'd probably be most concerned with how it was going to look. And we hadn't heard a lot about that until you just mentioned that. And honestly, I'd like to see some more by way of renderings and design in your application of what this is going to look like to me traversing Old Oak and Bucket Road. What it's going to look like from the main street. I'd like to see a general idea of landscaping, like to see a general idea of lighting, or even have a sign that says the cottages at Old Oak and Bucket. I recognize that this is fluid now, that we're still in the early stages. But if I was in a butter, it would be hard to tell you what I did and did not want until I saw a general idea. That would be helpful. I think that's going to require some more flushing out of what we're going to do with the existing home, to be honest, just for me. My personal preference, which I don't think should matter here, but because no one else has expressed their personal preference yet, I'm kind of surprised at it. If 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 Abraham Lincoln suffered at this house, we're not going to knock it down, right? But short of that, it's going to look a little out of place the way it looks now, given what I think are are actually very nice-looking cottages that you're about to build. So I think we should consider what if we knock it down, what's it's going to look like? What are we going to do with units and bedrooms in that regard? If we're going to keep it, are we going to reface it? And I'd I'd like to see your real proposal on that and what it's going to look like from the street. We're going to get that. We're going to get that setback plan from you, and we'll go over quickly your homework and our homework before we adjourn tonight. And and I think that's going to give the butter specifically more of an opportunity to be more specific.
Do I have a personal? And just a thought on the old house versus those two units that are facing on Old Oak and Bucket. Ideally, I I wouldn't want to see units from Old Oak and Bucket, but a thought would be to maintain that old house with the older facade and do something next to it in a similar facade that matches what's that complements what's on Old Oak and Bucket and not these two stranger things that sort of might be better off to back home development.
It's it's one of two. It's a completely different style of unit, right? That was my question earlier. So, you know, you have some things to think about here, whether you want to make, keep it, make other things look like it, or make it look like other things, or get rid of it, right? Those are sort of your three
sort of options, and I think people would like to see them. But I honestly, I in an ideal world, the developer and neighbors would feel comfortable with how it looks, and if I hate it, I'll be, I'll sleep fine at night. But I, that would be great, but what is important to me is that sooner than later, these folks get an idea of what it's going to look like when we're driving by. And again, back to Mr. Marshall's question.
And and again, it's it's not the first building that's going to be on Old Oak Bucket that is new for a number of new houses near the Cranberry Bog.
Oh, sure, right, and, you know, so.
You know, there's a lot of things to to play with, right? This is not, it's not an unusual idea to have, you know, one or two homes on Old Oak Bucket.
Great comments. We'll we'll look into those seriously.
Thank you, your gentleman here. Yeah.
Hi, uh, I'm Steve Mooney from one forty nine Old Oak and Bucket. And I'm also owner of Pope's Pond Cranberry Company, which is one seventy one Old Oak and Bucket. Uh, first of all, on one forty nine and the traffic issue, I have a beautiful deck that overlooks Old Oak and Bucket. And I kind of monitor in my semi-retirement uh what's coming down from Norwell. And a lot of the names on the side of those trucks are not from Situate. That that's a through pass into into the town of Situate. And if you add the three A development and the 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 train station development, now the new gas station, that rotary, as you 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 know, is going to be very impacted. And that street with just a couple of cars on it as you come into one twenty three, which is right by the rotor, is backed up on a regular basis today. I'm just saying, it's going to be a real impact here. And you add some of the speed coming through there. Of course, it slowed down because the roads are wrecked now, right? However, if you if you do pave it, which is probably going to happen at some point, you're going to see higher speeds. There's going to be some incidents. Add the children, add the school buses, and that's a real issue. So put that aside just for a second. One seventy one is the Cranberry Bog uh water resource. And uh, this is a, I supply cranberries to Ocean Spray, who do inspections of that water uh unannounced to me at least twice a year. And to give you an example, we've had some uh marginal returns based on Canadian geese, a a big year of Canadian geese. So the drainage and the runoff of this type of development whatever may, and if someone says it's ninety nine percent septic trade, that one percent could do several things to that water resource. That could mean that I'm not eligible to bring cranberries in. The other thing is, I have reported the town in two thousand and five, uh, done by a hydrogeologist that actually was a contractor to the town of Situate and ex-head of Water Resources in Norwell, saying that this is the largest drinking water resource available to the town of Situate period. The two hundred and uh the twenty-five to thirty million gallons of surface water and three times that much of groundwater, which I've done all the drillings and paid for and have all the numbers. The town has not recognized that, and there were some other studies later on that were done in a different area that showed that there wasn't, even though I gave that uh engineer where I found water and he did it a quarter mile away. So there's not only surface water, there's groundwater, there's cranberries to be in in involved and 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 the uh issue of the of the traffic. This is really a big development for that little area. We're overdoing it, guys. We're really overdoing it.
Sure. Can I just uh?
Yes, please.
I've known Mr. Mooney for a while. I have great sentimental respect for him. I uh uh I I I I was involved in uh the water study scenario in two thousand and five and that timeframe. The town uh has articulated a problem with the amount of water we have available. And uh I I I I think that uh I think that potential solution to that problem, the consideration of the aquifer sitting under Mr. Mooney's bog, um, which I think has a good yield. And uh, and I and I think uh I think that it's something worth looking into, which is completely separate from this application, but I just wanted to get it on the record because I never understood, mind the town, didn't uh take advantage of that. I I didn't think that there's a direct, I think that there's pipes that go right from that area directly into the uh water treatment pipe. So anyway.
Hopefully the Water Resource Commission is watching.
Yeah.
Like to bring it up again.
I I I I understand. So I, towns' water issues generally aside, they're not worthy topics, absolutely. To your point about wastewater, that's absolutely going to be looked at. I am by no means an expert. The ninety nine percent comment before was with respect to the septic system, leaching specifically, and was not meant that then that one percent remains unaddressed. It meant that this particular aspect of the system, which is not the entire system, was designed to handle ninety nine percent. Uh, well, I'm sure accurate, was part advertisement. Engineers are going to be looking at that. That is absolutely going to be reviewed in detail. Mr. Foley on Zoom. You're able to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, hi there. Thank you for taking me. Uh, again, it's Ed Foley. Uh, I live at twenty-one Marilyn Road. And with all due respect to the developers, I just want to voice my objection um for two two main reasons. Uh, number one, and it's been touched upon all night, is traffic safety. Uh, number two is water demands. Uh, regarding traffic safety, Marilyn Road is just a short distance from the opening of this development. Uh, people have been talking about the intersection of Maple and Old Oak and Bucket. Um, we've had serious problems um at uh Marilyn Road uh over the years. Um, we've brought it up with the Situate Police Department and the uh Safety Division. Um, just about everybody on our street. Uh, we've got uh seven or eight households, about four or five have been hit. Um, we've had meetings with the town of Situate, uh, the uh Situate Police Department Traffic Division. So it's going to make an already terrible safety issue worse. And there's no, there's no two ways getting around that. Um, a couple of folks already objected to that. They talked about speed limits thirty miles an hour. People are going forty plus easily. And where Marilyn Road is located, it's referenced in Karen Campfield's letter that she's written to Mass Housing. Uh, it's basically a blind hill, and we're basically shooting ducks trying to take a left-hand turn uh, you know, west headed towards this development, toward Maple Street. It's a very, very dangerous situation. With uh, and there are several people in the audience who live on Marilyn Road who have joined me uh on some of these safety meetings. So safety for me is paramount, and that's why I would have to object to this development. Second thing, people have talked about it, water demands. Uh, we all know that's a real hot-button issue in Situate. Um, this past spring, uh, we had the all of Old Oak and Bucket torn up and had a, you know, a new pipeline put down. Folks of Marilyn Road uh were overlooked and did not get that increase. Folks of Marilyn Road, uh, were overlooked and did not get that increased, uh, size in the pipe. So we already have terrible water pressure, and this will certainly, I think, add to that, uh, poor water pressure. So those are my two issues, safety, traffic safety, and water demands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foley.
Miss, go ahead. Yeah, I was gonna make a comment, as it is, uh, the water pressure issue, all these are correct, but we haven't brought up the water pressure issue. Um, and I think, um, you folks, one, will need to address that. Uh, similarly sized, slightly larger developments, um, have addressed that, um, by the installation of a pump house. Um, so, um, I'd like to hear from you guys at the appropriate time, what you're thinking along, uh, those lines, because it is a problem. Um, it is uphill, um, right? So, it's.
Well, so they're often close to the water tower up on.
Well, sorry, I don't know where the feed's gonna come from, right? So that's definitely.
Yeah, so it comes down from there, so the closer you are to the water, oddly enough, the closer you are to the water tower, the lower the water pressure. Uh, so it's naturally low in that area.
I live down, literally down the street, I'm out on the butter, but I'm down Old Oak and Bucket, so, you know, we have a pump, we have a pump house for that development.
Yeah.
I'm just raising.
Yes.
No.
Um, yeah, so we're gonna, probably got about five to 10 more minutes of public comment for this evening, because I do want to double back to some to-do list. Mr. Murphy on Zoom.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Uh, I echo a lot of the concerns of a lot of the neighbors, uh, here, Matt Murphy, 268 Old Oak and Bucket. But what I'm finding most concerning, uh, this evening is Mr. Chairman, when you said the cottages that you will be bu- bu- building and also, um, when, when the lottery is, uh, actually happening, is this something that, is this just a formality and this is a done deal? Because that's, by comments like that by the chairman, makes me feel that way.
Sure, Mr. Murphy, I'll, I'll address that. In my opinion, these folks are gonna build something there. They're gonna build more than three or four units. The record for towns denying 40B application has horrific results for those towns. For instance, and I'll withdraw the word horrific, but what is being built on the border heading into Marshfield is the result with what I think are some lucky chains of events for the towns of the town saying, just saying no to a 40B application. Everything that you read from the state, from the legal community, from other towns, recommends against towns just saying no to 40B. It doesn't work out for the town. If I still lived at 297, I would be adamant that we not just say no to this application. They will have the opportunity to appeal, and history would say that they would be rather successful in building something and the town would have less input than we have the opportunity to have now. So to answer your question, it is not a done deal, but it is very unlikely that I am going to vote to entirely do not deny their application. It's also very unlikely that I'm not going to press them over the course of this to modify their application. So I, to a certain extent, I apologize for saying when, but to a certain extent, I think it's pretty clear that I don't. Um, but I do owe you that clarification, and I'm glad you asked that question. I hope that that was an effective answer. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, Karen, I was just looking for that Old Oak and Bucket. And I just, since I got the letter and saw that, I was just like, where are they gonna put all this? And then after seeing the designs too, all the time listening to everybody here tonight, having actual those cottages on the main road so close, you know, this, this doesn't even make sense. Because the road is winding. And from Maple Street, you go straight and then there's, you can't see where the, where the big opening's gonna be for to go there. Those other two houses there, where the historical houses, you're not gonna see anybody. And then I live, I take my life in my hands every time I leave my house, I'm right at the hill. Going up to Marilyn there just talking, I have two joint ways to get in and out. I look at my rearview mirror when I'm heading towards Maple Street, just to make sure nobody's on my tail, to pull into one side. Or, because if, if there is, then I have to, like, thank goodness I have another option. But getting in and out of this stuff, I, I just don't see it. And then there are gonna be children. The school bus, I see accidents, I just see accidents, you know, I really do.
I, I think you're right. The board's going to dig into their traffic report. The board's going to have its own engineer review that traffic report and make modifications, amendments, agree, disagree, however they see fit. We're going to hear further from police and fire, and then the board's going to make a determination. I, I am relatively confident that any permit that we may issue will address with conditions unless, through conversations, they amend their application to at least try to mitigate some of those concerns at the very least.
And, okay, this is not really specific how wide that road is going into all of this. Um, you know, you talked about the stock bridge. I think two cars can go by each other, and it's kind of windy, but I'm sure that's gonna be direct because this house is here. You know, figure people trying to get in and out. Where your mailbox is gonna go, gonna be in NDCPU. Um, that's gonna be in the beginning, you know, they talk about a place for kids to, um, you know, wait for a bus. You're gonna have to come up with a location for that unless that's on the plan.
Uh, that is on the plan now, it's on the plan with some lack of specificity. I would agree there. Uh, any plan that ends up being approved will have significantly more specificity on that. Yes, sir.
So, question for Mr. Lovendale. Um, the selectwoman asked you about, you know, your decision for the land, you said it was the best solution for the land. Now, probably the best solution for the land would have been to, you know, by zoning requirements that are in place and putting five houses on five, six, seven lots, about 32 units. So, I don't think anyone here would ever want five more houses on a, on, you know, a little street. It's the problem of the, all the impacts it's gonna cause on our community. Yes, the tax dollars will help with replacing pipes, but that's not the problem, the problem is we don't have made enough water. And my row's been paying taxes since 1955 when it was built, and we were told that there was no money to replace our pipes or pay for our row. So I don't think that's gonna really make sense.
Yes, ma'am, they're back there, we're gonna get to both of you, absolutely.
My name is Virginia Verdegas, I'm on 41, we're playing off of Old Oak and Bucket. Um, your answer to saying no to 40, Mr. Sharon, your answer to saying no to 40B was a little disheartening to me because it sounds like we don't have a choice to even modify this. And, but that's how I, that's how I interpreted it, apparently that was wrong. And then I went back to Mr. Lovendale's response of this is what's best for the land, 40B was the most appropriate. Um, almost like if we stand 40B on it, then can't sit down, can't say no, they can't modify, it's gonna be, um, very difficult to resist. That is very disheartening as a resident.
Sure, so let me clarify, and I thought that I did say, but it bears clarification again. We absolutely can seek modifications to the application. We could, to be honest, we couldn't even approve the application, that's before us as it stands right now. It's, it's, there's too much lack of specifics. The applicant knows that. The lack of specifics in their application now is at least in part, so that we can have these discussions and come to a conclusion and come to specifics that at least the town has input in. We can modify, we can, we can impose conditions. We can also deny. Denials provide avenues to the applicant that I think are bad avenues for this town. We plan on reviewing, on getting those specifics, on creating conditions and/or modifications to their application, so that we can make it the best for the town that we can in light of a multifamily development of approximately this many units going in. The state has already decided that this site is applicable for development of roughly this many units, if 25% of them are affordable. In deciding that, they anticipated that they would need likely a rather robust list of waivers from local bylaws and ordinances. If we just say no and essentially disagree with the state, they have the avenue to appeal. And 40B applicants that appeal flat-out denials by towns hit for an incredible average. I want to avoid that. That does not mean that I think we should approve this application in whatever manner they submit. Sir?
From Geneva 58 Kingsway. I want to offer up a suggestion for considerations to the board and for the developer based on some experience that I had that I believe might be helpful. I heard a couple of butters here say tonight about groundwater and water runoff. I was the butter on a big development in Stittswood, I was down kind of on the side of a slope, and there were water issues there. Uh, I took the developer to court and with one out of the butter, I'm gonna send that from superior court to a lower court to kind of mitigate the water that would run downhill to me. You gotta approve, subdivided the lots, sold the lots off the builder, he was gone, his corporation was gone. And then I sat there and watched the water come downhill and cost me $40,000. So my recommendation is that you put up a performance bond. You got an excellent engineer, the town's gonna get a good advisor, you should come up with a good plan, and the bond won't be drawn on at all. But if, God forbid, something unexpected happens, then the butters have some recourse.
That is an excellent recommendation and absolutely what we're planning on doing here. Specifically with respect to stormwater, because that's what you mentioned, but with respect, with respect to anything else that needs to be built or maintained. They'll make proposals, their engineers will make proposals. Our engineer will make proposals or comment on their proposals. O and M, operation and maintenance, will be part of those proposals. To the extent that there is operation and maintenance, and if our engineers advise that a bond would be appropriate, we will absolutely seek to put one in place, without a doubt. Very good information, and I'm glad that you brought it out, so that was discussed here, very useful. It's a, it's a quarter to 10, we are going to close public comment for this hearing, we are absolutely going to open public comment again. I was keeping a bit of the list, I encourage all of you to please help me round that out. We'll start with my to-do list. I'm reaching out to Norwell and Stittswood Fire and Police with a more direct request for comment on traffic safety along the road and also safety within the proposed development. If they have questions, we'll get those to the applicant. If they have any response whatsoever, we'll get those to the applicant right away. If they said they have questions, we'll get them to you as soon as possible, so that you can endeavor to answer them. I am, we're going to follow up on our request for proposals from peer reviewers. We're going to share those responses with you. And we'll come back to that in a moment. Also, I'm going to reach out to DPW and the Water Resource Commission for their comment on water use and capacity of town generally and in the neighborhood. For you, I have a setback plan. I have more information on renderings, landscape, lighting, architecture from the perspective of the street.
I was just gonna add, if we could, as part of your civil set, a logistics plan, I think, like riprap at the entrance for debris, truck going in and out, some type of weekly erosion control program, I think that's probably on sheet one that you skipped over quickly. But stuff of that sort, like a, a temporary, temporary measures, if you're gonna have two entrances or one entrance, for whatever reasons that may be, but a logistics plan outlining some of the stuff to be maintained during construction.
Probably a good idea to start thinking about a construction plan, I know you're first responsibly, we don't know what we're gonna build yet, we don't have a comprehensive permit. But, uh, a when, how, general timeline, things like that, those, those questions are, are going to come up from the butters and, and from the board. So, a, a general idea, we don't need to know when you're gonna build unit three, because we don't know if there'll be a unit three or what it's going to look like, but a general idea on that, um.
Did you mention the affordable calculation?
I didn't mention, I didn't re-mention that, but that was from earlier, and absolutely, I, I'd like some more clarity. So, I, there was a bit of clarity on what you submitted. I'd like you to take another look at that, having heard my concerns, and see what you can do, now knowing that that is a concern. Uh, see what you think about that and, and come back to us with a revision if you think one is, is appropriate or available. Regarding the peer reviewer, and well, we're, we're going to continue the hearing. I'd like your thoughts on how long we should wait before our next hearing. And I'd like to hear your thoughts on how we might avoid having another hearing without first selecting a peer review engineer.
Uh, well, I think the regulations that I've read about the two alternatives on the peer review indicated that, uh, something about a vote of the board, and I think that the vote of the board was in the context of the alternative to cooperating with the applicant on the selection. So, my answer to that is, uh, I believe that, uh, I could be collaborating with the board, Virginia, um, the, the board's administrator, um, with respect to the selection of the peer review. And that process probably could be concluded administratively, and, you know, may probably fall wrong that way. I, I would like to encourage the board, just a little bit of a digression. I think in my experience, having been involved in some, some, some larger projects from time to time, that the, the ones that work the best are the ones where the engineers and the professionals are able to kind of freely, uh, speak with one another, uh, and, you know, have like real dialogue about questions and answers that ultimately get in reports that are put before the board.
Yep.
And I'd like to incur, I'd just like to say that I'd like to encourage that that occurs. Um, so as far as selection of a peer review consultant, I think, um, co-op, working cooperatively doesn't need to be done in the context of a hearing. And that will allow hopefully some form of review before the next hearing. I think that, uh, I think that what makes sense is, in an ideal world, what, what, what we're, what we would want to. In our ideal world, what, what, what we're, what we would wanna do is we would want to take your list of items and your questions. Formulate some form of revisions to plans and responses to that. And then have those submitted to the peer review engineer for an initial run-through before the next meeting. And I think that, uh, one month is probably a little too short for that process. Um, and so I think, you know, I, I don't know, I mean, just listening to what, what we've been asked to provide. And a lot of the illness is unmarked here, uh, but I would imagine he's gonna need a good month. Just to get it together before it's submitted, before it could be reviewed. And your peer review engineer is gonna need some time on that. So, my opinion is at the very least six weeks. And no more than eight weeks, at least for the next hearing.
I tend to agree with everything you just said.
Okay.
Yeah.
If, if the RFPs are gonna come in on May third, I'm just gonna speculate here. We won't know who the peer review engineer is going to be for another week anyways, okay? So, that's the, basically the end of the second week in May. Everybody is busy, okay?
Yeah.
Everybody who's any good is busy.
Including yourselves.
Even the bad people are busy. Uh, so if we have a, you have chosen a peer review engineer by the end of the second week in May. He's gonna need four to six weeks to review, uh, do a thorough review. Uh, then I'm gonna need a month, okay? So, June, July, so you're talking about a, a hearing at the end of the second week in July.
And then you're gonna need another substantive hearing after that, before you even, uh, talk about waivers and things of that nature.
Yeah.
So, you're looking at like four more hearings, and your, your date is.
I think we're getting a little, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves. I. I wanna make sure that we don't take a month to get a peer reviewer reviewing at least some of your materials. I don't need a conclusive result from those peer reviewers, and I don't need your conclusive response. To what those peer reviewers conclude at the next hearing, or maybe even the hearing after that. But I, I do want to not delay that process progressing. We're administratively, if you and I and Janine determine what we're going to set them off on. We may have another hearing, we may hear a great comment from a member of the public, and then we may add to that peer review list. But I don't wanna hold them off from conducting their initial review. Because we're waiting for, for that process to get itself going.
I would imagine part of their response to the RFP would be their availability as well inherent into it.
Yes, ab- absolutely, and timing. I would. I'd like to set another hearing for sometime in June.
June twenty-second or twenty-third. You have a meeting on the sixteenth, that Thursday before?
Yes.
So, I think that the appropriate time would be the following week at some juncture, and I don't know if you need to, uh, if you need to check on the availability of this room. Or if you need to set maybe this, uh, a different location such as the library that you know would be available or something to that effect.
Uh, yeah, I, I'd like to propose, I think, Janine, with, with that type of notice, the twenty-second or the twenty-third, we should be able to find a room, right? And we can, we can set a hearing date with the location to be confirmed by the building party.
Sorry to put more, more on you.
No, no, um. Janine, for, for you and Bob, do you have a preference for the twenty-second or the twenty-third? You know, members of the board, availability, it's a Wednesday, Thursday, twenty-second or the twenty-third.
Special meetings still Wednesday.
I like it. So, we'll, we'll have a more serious motion in a minute, but, okay, so we're gonna, we're going to continue the hearing to Wednesday, the twenty-second. And we'll have a motion in a minute. And before that. I, I'd like to make a motion just to confirm the board's understanding that Janine, myself. And Attorney DeLisi will be communicating administratively to nail down a peer reviewer that works for the town. And, and this board, which, which I'll be making the decision for, and, and the applicant, yes, please. I said you could interrupt, you shouldn't be on here.
Oh, me?
Yes, please.
I'd like to be included in that discussion as well, allowing.
One hundred percent, I didn't name you, but you absolutely will. You're, there aren't gonna be many emails I send on this going forward that you're not gonna be CC'd on.
I'm sure Jeff will keep me in the loop if you don't remind him.
I will, I, I think that, i- i- without even thinking just of it, I think that good communication is something that often is lacking. And I think it's really good and very important in this circumstance, so.
It's, it's going to lead to better hearings, it's going to lead to better content for the public to comment on and review. And hopefully get us to a better place.
Is it, we have to go on? Make a double motion that we agree to work cooperatively with the developer on this necessarily, or anything like that?
If, I, I would, I would certainly second such a motion.
Or do we have to, don't we have to agree to have a blue liaison?
I, well, that's, 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 that's.
That's second, I was about to say second, but.
Yes, yes, so, so the motion just reiterated is that the chair will be working with Janine, Bob. The board's special counsel and the applicant to nail down a peer reviewer. And to get at least the initial items of peer review going prior to the next hearing. I would not be limiting or taking any future areas of peer review off the table by any means. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, get out of, another motion that we continue this hearing to June twenty-second. A Wednesday, again at seven PM. To be located in this room or elsewhere dependent on availability, but as soon as that is determined, it will be publicized on this EBA's website.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Anthony, I, I give my rules, my local rules, I just want to.
You did give me your local rules.